All right, council, we will, am I off mute, Jen? All right, council, we'll call our Monday, April 20 special meeting in order. I'd like to welcome all of you, those who are, well, all of us are practicing our social distancing, our Zoom, our remote meeting. We also have some citizens who are joining us throughout the city as well as, I think, one gentleman from Iraq. So, welcome to a special meeting of the Fayetteville City Council. Item 2.0 is the prayer invocation. At this time, I'd like to ask Pastor and Councilmember Davis, if you wouldn't mind, give us your invocation, sir.
Let us pray. Christ's Father, we thank you for this day you've given us. We come to you in this moment of need, wisdom, knowledge, and with that understanding, God, we pray that you would give us one heart and one mind. We thank you for allowing us to serve the great city of Fayetteville. And in this time of the pandemic, God, that you would continue to be with us, be our grace, be our strength, God, be our healing. Most of all, God, help us to discern what your will is in this time and give us the will to do what your will is. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
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 Item 3.0 is the pledge allegiance. Know that we can just point to the flag that is either within your home or in a certain direction. All right, we've got it. All right, so if we can, at this time, stand and repeat, okay, we'll sit because they can't see us. Jennifer taught us that. All right, pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic. Stand one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, peace. All right, item 4.0 is the approval of the agenda. Council, I look to you for a motion.
Don't move, sir.
There's a motion by Councilmember Hare, the second by Councilmember Davis to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. By show of hands, those in favor? Jen, I can't see. I can't see that. All right, council, those in favor? All right. Madam clerk, that is unanimous by those who are present. Motion carries. Item 5.01, COVID update. Mr. Scott Buller, Emergency Management Coordinator, is he here?
There he is. Okay.
Mr. Buller, you with us?
Sir.
All right, sir. Take it away.
Good afternoon, council and everyone who is connected to us together with this technology. Our state of emergency now for the city of Fayetteville, this is day 36. We have 6,764 cases statewide with 179 deaths as a result of the virus across 93 counties. Currently at this time, as was reported this morning, we have 373 hospitalizations that are statewide. And then here locally, 113 cases in Cumberland County with six fatalities. Just a bit of the numbers. The burn rate for the state of North Carolina, which includes money spent by all state agencies that are activated in the State Emergency Response Center, is in the neighborhood this hour of about $193.5 million. And here locally, the burn rate in the city of Fayetteville, as far as our efforts collectively so far, have been $50,864. And some of that will be added to as we go along, but that's just what we have encumbered in and actively spending an account at the moment. Just some other numbers that we're concerned about right now. I noticed this this morning, looking at across the state at the case counts in different counties. And as you would imagine, our most populous county, Mecklenburg, would have the most at 1,200 or so, and then Wake being our second most populous county, they were just under 600 before lunchtime. The real surprise is who number three happened to be. I don't consider Wayne County urban at all, and Goldsboro is a wonderful city, but it's very small in comparison, say, to a Guilford or a Cumberland or Forsyth or Durham or something along those lines. The reason I'm underscoring this is our eyes are very conscious and we're very diligently tracking congregate situations. In the case of Wayne, the News Correctional Institute, at one particular site there at that prison, they have 458 positive cases. And many of those, we're told about 98%, were asymptomatic. So, that kind of underscores our concern and our vigilance over places like jails or long-term nursing centers and that sort of thing, that the virus will burn right through and there may not be much of a warning. And we worry about that high-risk population, which is very much the case with what we've experienced here with a nursing home in our city that has had 13 cases and two patients. I know staff there and the providers and so forth are working very hard to really follow the same sort of mitigation features that we're doing with constant hand washing and PB and that sort of thing to try to stifle off this virus and hang in there. One other item that I want to underscore, this has been mentioned a little bit before, but I think it's very important. A lot of our food banks and food supplies around, not only in the city of Fayetteville or Cumberland County, but all over the entire region, are kind of low at the moment. So, I want to encourage our listeners and our citizens, if you need food, please reach out to 211 or at least call with your smartphone, text 877-877 to get Food NC, and they can direct you to where some of these resources are. And then likewise, please join me in going through your pantries and providing donations of food to our local food banks. And you can either find that with feedingthecarolinas.org or call 211 and they can put you on to who you need to talk to. And if you don't have canned goods or shelf-stable items to donate, then by all means, give them a cash donation. And that way, we don't have to worry so much about food insecurity and hunger in our area, even though we live in a very generous and a very resourceful community, and we do a good job of that. I guess, let me end on one short thing. Many have probably seen the 14-page document that came out from the White House about the path ahead, about how in three phases, we might eventually reopen some things. And that's kind of at the national level, real high overview. And I really don't have anything more detailed other than the testing, tracking, and trends that Governor Cooper has mentioned. And my shop is kind of eagerly awaiting the details that might get filled in so that we can kind of anticipate what that looks like. We welcome that. And by all means, I will end on the note that we're very conscious that it's 41 days to hurricane season, so we're wanting to get as many plans in place that we can shift and flex and take care of the city. Subject your questions, I'll mute off and await them.
Mr. Buller, we certainly appreciate your update. We appreciate the hard work that you are putting in in this community and the insightfulness that you bring us, reference to COVID as it relates to the city of Fayetteville. I think you hit a couple of points that will probably require further discussion. To your point, as you know, the governor's order is set to expire through the end of the, well, will be active until the end of the month. Well, we'll seek guidance as to whether they will renew it. We also have a curfew that will remain intact until the end of the month. And so, although we certainly pray for 113 citizens of this county, we are certainly fortunate compared to many places. And so, we'll continue to do the things we've been doing, in my opinion. With that being said, council, I'll go to you for questions on this matter shortly. And I would like to also ask, just as a final note, that any recommendations that you may have related to our policy actions or the, anything that you have to add to this discussion about what our path forward is in an emergency order, if you could please just email me, and we'll try to collectively bring that discussion together. But right now, I'll go to Councilmember Ingram, then Councilmember Hare and Banks-McLaughlin.
Thank you. But John, locally, you said we had currently six fatalities and about over 100 patients currently with COVID. As we are beginning to see these numbers rise, and I know today is the 20th, so in a couple of days, we will, I guess, need to be beginning the conversations of where we are with moving forward and with our executive orders. Are there any recommendations outside of what we currently have in place that you would at least kind of open counsel to look at, that you've seen others? I'm not going to say seen other cities, but seen something that has worked and be effective? And I think every municipality is figuring this out as we go. So, all of this is for the benefit of our city's health and their protection. So, is there anything of a recommendation outside of what we are currently doing moving forward as we begin these discussions with renewing our executive orders?
I'm not sure quite how to answer that without maybe a little deeper conversations with public health, but the way I'm going to approach it, we're going to have to be patient. We're going to have to continue these strategies that are working so well because the part that I'm kind of hinting at with thinking about the road ahead, before we had a problem because there was not enough testing supplies to do the testing. Well, now that we have community widespread of the virus, we're going to find more cases. People are going to be a little shocked at the number maybe creeping up a little bit, but I think over time, and this is the way the whole epidemiologist process will work, once you have good widespread testing and you can do some real strong contact tracing of where those cases are, where they're going, who they're brushing elbows with, and how it's being transmitted, then we'll get a tighter handle on this, eventually to the point where it'll be controlled. Now, the endpoint, none of us like this, but the actual endpoint way out at the end of the road is a vaccine. And that's going to take a while. Some say a year, some maybe longer. But I think we've already seen a very fruitful application of the social distancing and the hand washing and other measures like that for mitigation, because we've seen the actual flu numbers and trends actually take a dive, which all of this is interrelated if we practice those good habits. And again, as far as a specific recommendation, I'm not sure yet because I can't see what the details are coming from federal, state, down to local. And I don't want to, me personally or my shop, we don't want to be caught off guard by something, we're not aware of, something coming, if that's a fair answer.
Thank you so much, Mr. Buller, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thanks, sir. Councilmember Hare?
You mentioned that the people, if residents, were running short on food along as we are running short as far as the organizations that dispense that food. What was that number? You said they could take?
Yes, sir. First is probably the call to 211, which is like 911, except it's 211, and that's as kind of a gateway to social service-type programs. The text message goes to 877-877, and that's Food NC. And what their job primarily is, is to ask your address through the text message, so you text it back to them, and then they will direct you to where some of these distribution points are. Now, let me qualify, their focus is for children, as well it should be, but they can also place adults and others that might be needy.
And did you say that? I don't know if you meant that we were having a shortage statewide? Or were you saying we have a shortage in the city of Fayetteville? What were you saying, statewide or Fayetteville?
It's primarily statewide, but I don't know that we're at the point of a shortage. Let me rephrase my comment if it wasn't clear. Our food banks are drawing down, they're not empty, but we're not getting the replenishment, and we don't have the volunteers that we normally do when we're all well and healthy. So, we want to bolster that and not run out.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I was just making notes.
All right, sir. Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin?
I'm thank you, Mayor. Mr. Buller, thank you for everything that you've done thus far. He answered a couple of questions, well, yeah, he answered a couple of questions that I had, but I know that about our last special meeting, you mentioned that we spent $10,000 and since then, we're at $50,000. So, I was just curious to know what are some of the positive impact the city has made as it relates to the pandemic? And what are some of the things you feel that we can work a little bit better on to kind of alleviate the number?
I think certainly all the time and effort we've spent, and now we're starting to realize the actual dollar value on cleaning and in such a way, hand washing and other mitigation practices has saved the day, quite literally. The social distancing, I think, is a struggle sometimes. We've had to somehow manipulate and change some of our city processes, whereas it used to be appropriate to walk right up to a service window for whatever inquiry or whatever service you might be looking for. Now, there might be a piece of Plexiglas going forward, or there might be a certain distance with a line out of courtesy that we need to stand behind. I think all of those things, when we look back on this, we're going to say, gee, we should have been doing that all along, and it's made a difference. But I would say the one piece going forward that we really probably haven't thought enough about is what we're doing here tonight. We have the capability from a continuity perspective, that if we have wireless access anywhere in the world, we can still come together as a group and take care of the citizens' business or whatever the requirement might be to meet together. And I'm excited about that going forward.
Now, as it, one more question, I'm sorry. Now, as it relates to the homeless population, where are we at right now?
Yes, ma'am. I understand there's a meeting that will occur once the invites are sent again from public health on Wednesday afternoon of this week. I know there was a proposal discussed about possibly procuring 10 hotel rooms in some sort of block fashion, but I don't know where that stands. That would be in the lap of Dr. Green and public health.
And yes, and I was on that meeting, and that's one of the things that I want to bring back to the council to see if we can possibly help with that financial method they're facing.
Thank you, Councilmember Banks. Thank you, Mr. Buller. And I did have one more question, Councilmember Davis.
Yes, Mayor of Council.
Mr. Mayor, have a. Well.
Hello?
Do you have the floor, sir?
Yes, sir. Um, you mentioned the improvement we've seen based on our behavior changes, distancing, washing hands, you know, being conscientious about how we interact. I have a question concerning viral infections in general. Do not viral, is not there a viral season that starts maybe in November and ends in March, April? Because most viruses don't survive or thrive in heat or warm months. Number one, that's my first question. And number two, do you think looking ahead that these changes in our behavior during these peak viral seasons, that they may be something we may need to look at maintaining in some form or fashion for other things? The flu, all the other things? Because every year, people die of viral infections. The pandemic we're facing now is a heightened level of it, but every year, we lose thousands and thousands of people to the very thing we're talking about. What are your thoughts on what the viral season looks like annually and what our long-term adjustments, at least seasonal, may need to be as we move through this and move beyond this?
Yes, sir. I don't want to somehow step on public health's toes, and I wouldn't pretend to be an expert in their arena, because truly, that question is probably best for them. But what I would just simply add to it is the flu season has a very defined season, at least insofar as they track it. And we know also from monitoring that, that 165 people have died this year from that flu season. And you have to wonder about the flu. After all, we have a shot and a vaccine for it, but we still lose people because the virus changes and it's not always the same strain or the wrong strain is selected for vaccination. So, even in areas where we're equipped to at least treat some things, it's not always a perfect science. And I think we might be better off to let Dr. Green maybe hammer away at that question.
And council, before I go to Councilmember Wright, that may be a great follow-up point. I'll try to reach out to Dr. Green, see if she can give us an update. She briefed us when we initially got started, and maybe she can give us a review as to where we are. And I'll keep you posted. I'll go to Councilmember Wright. Is he muted? Hold on, council.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Buller, for your update. I just have one question for you, and it may be above your pay grade, but you know, the main concern I have is testing or test kits. I know that they say test kits are shortage around the country, but it's almost like, you know, without testing, there would be no way for us to know the dynamics of the spread of the virus. And so, we could be circling the wagon and thinking we're doing well, but if we're not testing properly to have the test kits, you know, we could get a spike thinking that we're ahead of the game. So, if you would just help me to understand, you know, what's the problem with this shortage of test kits in the country, one of the richest, powerful countries in the world, and we have a problem getting a test kit when thousands are dying every day from this virus? And so, what are we looking at for testing in this, in our local community?
Okay, sir. There were kind of two problems initially. One were the materials themselves that were part of the sampling process that you're actually going to put in a bag and send to the particular lab. And at the time, in the beginning, that was the state public health lab, which was primary. That was kind of problem one, was scarcity of those materials. Problem two was the throughput that that one particular lab could manage to accomplish. Now that time's passed a month, if you will, there are other heavyweights that have come on the scene like LabCorp, Quest, other large private laboratories that can do the same amount of testing. And we're seeing the testing actually bolster day after day. Again, though, the demand is still so great that there's a certain amount of catch-up being played. However, I would make note, and this comes from Dr. Tolson in the comments made it from Governor Cooper's staff, testing is one of those factors along the same line that you're thinking, we have to have good testing in the community in order to decide whether or not we can start to reopen things and kind of relax some of our procedures. So, certainly, it's got to continue to catch up.
Absolutely.
I don't know that we have that big of a problem locally. I know some of the providers have the choice to test or not. And sometimes the thought process is, this is such an asymptomatic disease, the testing up until now has been kind of limited. If you didn't have a fever and you weren't having flu-like symptoms, it simply wasn't indicated to test you unless you were in that high-risk group or for whatever reason had a special exception.
Well, Mr. Buller, I'm understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they're saying that you are more contagious or easier to spread the disease when you don't show any signs versus when the signs start showing, you know? So, that's kind of a problem. If you have the virus, haven't been tested, but not showing signs, you're more contagious at that time. Am I right?
Yes, sir. And that's what is truly the devil with this virus. We could be just walking around, not have a single problem in the world and be a carrier, actually exposing our friends and family, and that's why the social distancing has become so important.
So, thank you, Mr. Buller. And we certainly don't want to put you on the spot in council. Some of these questions, Mr. Buller may or may not have at his disposal, but he's doing a great job in addressing most of our concerns. Mr. Buller, just before I let you go, you said something earlier about hurricane season being 40 days away. If we have a major storm with emergency shelter being encouraged like it is during those times to where we open up our rec centers, we open up other avenues for people to come in, how does that work in relation to COVID, where we're asking the opposite to happen, where we're encouraging, discouraging those type of gatherings? What is our plan if we have a major storm during this crisis?
That's going to be a challenge, Mayor. One vision that I would have of what it might look like is more shelters with smaller populations, rather than having one large one with a bunch of people crammed in it. We may have to reach out with the county together and open multiple centers and have people spaced out more than they've ever been spaced before. And I don't want to lock into that, but I have to throw the caveat out, we'd have to be really creative, because if the social distancing measures are still in place, then we've got to find a way to work with that, because we don't want to spread disease in our shelters.
Okay. All right. Mr. Buller, we thank you, sir, and council thanks you, and we'll look forward to an update next week.
Thank you.
Council, item 5.02, preliminary budget discussion. I guess that will be Mr. Hewitt. Is he muted? Mr. Hewitt?
Nope, okay.
I can hear you.
Okay. Good evening. We've got several items we'd like to walk through tonight with council. And toward the end of the staff presentation, we also going to be asking council's guidance on a couple of assumptions and operational issues as we prepare the budget for your consideration. High level tonight, one of the things we want to talk about is, I'm going to ask Tracy Broyles, who's on, to come on in just a moment and go through the revised budget calendar. Tracy's also going to cover the COVID-19 impacts to our major revenues for the general fund. And I think we've got, given you both of those documents, but she'll be able to share them on the screen as well as necessary. Then I'm going to have Assistant City Manager, Telly Whitfield, come on and talk about some of the things that we've done in preparation of these revenue shortfalls already in the current fiscal year and the things which will continue in next fiscal year. And we'll also have Telly and Tracy cover as well how we're moving forward with the recommended budget. And then I'll come back on with Tracy, and we'll talk about key revenue assumptions to prepare the FY '21 budget. And then we'll move into an area of council guidance. And but when we get down to that, I'll probably pop back on and make sure that council knows the areas that we would desperately need your guidance on to prepare the budget. But to start, Mayor, if I could, I'd ask Tracy to cover those first two items.
All right, Ms. Tracy, you ready?
Hear me?
We can now. Can you turn your volume up just a little? Okay.
Now, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm not sure if Jennifer or Brooke are going to share the calendar or if I can share from my screen.
Yeah, they're pulling it up now.
Do we need to make her a panelist along with Dr. Whitfield?
Yes, sir, I think she is a panelist.
All right. All right, Ms. Tracy, we have it up.
Okay. The document that you see there is a presentation that compares what our previously scheduled budget process was to what is now our, our plan based on its. our plan based on, it's obviously with all of the changes with COVID, it's taking some additional time to to work through those impacts. So we had, earlier, we had planned to have our formal budget presentation on May 11. And what our revised plan is about a two-week delay and that we would plan to do the formal budget presentation at your meeting on the Tuesday after Memorial Day. So that's Tuesday, May 26. We had planned some small group sessions on the Thursday and Friday before the formal presentation. So we certainly can still do those meetings if needed. And those would be on the 21st and 22nd of May. We had previously identified three dates for budget work sessions. What we would propose that those dates change to, if we still need three budget meetings, we would propose that those would be on three consecutive Thursdays, beginning May 28, June 4, and then June 11. And then that would put us on track to be able to adopt the budget before or at the final meeting in June, which is June 22. So that's staff's proposal for how we can work through the budget on this revised calendar.
Okay. All right, ma'am.
If there, if there aren't any questions, we can move on to talk about our projected impacts for the COVID revenues.
Okay.
Jennifer can share that document.
Load it up now, Ms. Tracy. All right.
Okay. So, so this document shows what we are anticipating our impacts to be for our major revenues that impact the general fund for both the current fiscal year and for next fiscal year that we're planning for. So if we start at the beginning, that's where our ad valorem taxes are. For the current fiscal year, we're anticipating some declines in motor vehicles only. All of our ad valorem taxes on real and personal property would pretty much be set already because they were based on values that were determined last January. That would be January of 2019. The motor vehicle taxes are taxed based on renewal dates. So if the assumption holds true that people are slowing down on replacing vehicles, we would see declines in our motor vehicle taxes. So we're looking at the, the current fiscal year that that would be about $227,000. For next fiscal year, we're assuming that there would be a slowdown in personal properties. However, the real property is based on values as of January of 2020. So we would not anticipate that those values would be changed at all. And then we would assume the motor vehicles that we would see declines through September and then a gradual return. If we can get all of this behind us as a community and as an economy, then a gradual return through the end of fiscal year '21 to an increase over the prior year of about 2%. So you can see in total, that would put us about $611,000 below what we would have projected for ad valorem taxes. So I will pause, Mr. Mayor, if there are any questions before I move on.
I don't see any. Oh, okay. Councilman Dawkins.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I can go ahead with a couple of issues I have, but I'd, I'd be just as fine to wait until the end because I want to talk about property tax revenue drop. And also PWC and, and let the mayor pro temp kind of give an update on what her committee has been discussing because if, if we're building a document to go to PWC for a request, my items or our items, I'd like for them to be considered. So I'm happy to wait till after Broyles finishes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll, we'll cover that, I'm sure, before we end budget discussions. Councilmember here?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if this is a question that our team can answer, but have you heard anything in the wind about any revale, any properties revales, properties being reevaluated? Either maybe next year? Is it any kind of conversation? Have you heard anything about that? Or is that something you can't answer?
We are, we are not on schedule for a revaluation next year. And I would say that you wouldn't want to push for a revaluation to get them to move the date forward because you want to be in a stronger economy when a revaluation happens. But next, next January is not a scheduled revaluation.
No, it was just a question.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm with you. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. Ms. Broyles, can you please, for the purpose of the listening audience, indicate what percentage of our operating budget we're looking at losing so that they can kind of put that in perspective? When we put the number out there, it, it seems like, you know, just a generic number to a lot of people who are not very familiar with our budget. Can you, can you specify percentage-wise what we're looking at losing as a result of COVID, the impact of COVID?
I don't have that number readily available, Councilmember Waddell. I can certainly, once we get through this presentation, I can try and pull some information up and jump back in and let everybody know.
Let me ask you this. If you were to use this year's budget as a, as a point of reference, what would the percentage be of difference between this year's budget with the, with the $2.8 million loss?
That's what I said. I'll have to pull that information up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Waddell. All right, Ms. Tracy, I think that's
Okay. Moving on, moving on to sales taxes then?
Yes.
What, this is really, you know, a strange situation for all of us. So we have relied upon advice from the League of Municipalities who has been tracking information from different economic forecasts. So what our assumption is at this point, we will, we are assuming that our revenues from March through June, sales taxes based on sales that occur in those months, that they would be 20% below what we are currently projecting. And then we would assume that we would have a gradual recovery. Beginning from July to September, we would estimate about a 9% reduction below the prior year. And then we would assume that through December, from October through December, we would just be down 3%. And then we would assume that the last half of the fiscal year, that we would be in a, a flat growth situation as compared to the prior year. So those, those impacts, you see, we have a line there for the sales taxes we get from the state. We do get some reimbursements from other municipalities under the inter-local agreement. That's a very small amount. But we also we also have reimbursements that we have to pay to Cumberland County and the other municipalities. So if our revenues are down, the amount that we have to pay in those reimbursements is similarly down. So we look at the net impact of those changes. So we would anticipate our sales taxes to be about $2.4 million below what we would have otherwise anticipated due to the COVID impacts in the current fiscal year. And then for next fiscal year, just over $3 million. As we come down the list, there are, there's a tiny change for our privilege licenses. That's mostly related to special events. But if we look at vehicle gross receipts taxes, those are taxes that are levied on rental vehicles and rental equipment. So we have assumed about a 25% reduction through the end of the current, through the end of the current year, and then a gradual recovery throughout FY21, but beginning with that same type of reduction. So we would think we would lose about $60,000 in each of the fiscal years related to that, the vehicle gross receipts tax. The next line is related to investment income. We have been trending at about a little over 2% rate of return on the cash that the city holds. What our finance department has advised is that they would expect that going forward, we would expect one quarter of a percent rate of return. So for the general fund, that's almost a million-dollar impact next fiscal year. There is no impact anticipated in the current fiscal year because the the majority of the cash that they had available for investment was already invested in in investments that would have the, the set rate of return through the end of the fiscal year. The last line of interest there shows the general fund support for the parking fund. So the reason that's on there is because we are anticipating COVID impacts on our parking revenues. And the parking fund has to be supplemented by the general fund if those parking revenues don't materialize. So the assumption there, we previously had planned to do paid-on-street parking beginning April 1. That was put on hold because of COVID. And then the other impact we have is that we have significant special event revenues that are generated from baseball games and the Dogwood Festival. So the assumption now is that those activities, the special events won't occur before the end of this fiscal year. So we would anticipate that we would lose $183,000 this year and then conservatively, assuming that we don't have special events or on-street parking to begin before January 1 of 2021, we would project $210,000 that the general fund would have to provide an additional supplement to the parking funders as a result of those lost revenues. So in total, $2.8 million impact projected for the current fiscal year, 4.9 million next year, for a total of $7.7 million of revenue impacts for the general fund related to COVID.
Right. All right. That covers the revenues. Questions? You plan to move to the next session?
Okay. If there are no other questions, we will transition to Dr. Whitfield now.
I had a question, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Councilman Dawkins. I didn't see you.
That's all right.
So, so counsel, counsel, before you do that, just to make sure I don't miss you, can you press the little raise your hand on there? That way Jennifer can catch any that I happened to miss. So, got you, Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you. And thank you, Tracy. My guidance is we're a little bit low on our percentages on the sales tax. I, I think, I think just anticipating we're going to miss it 9% is probably needs to be adjusted to 12%. And I mean, these are all, you know, the, these are all calculations. I know the League of Municipalities, you know, has put this out. I'm on the board. I get an email from them every day. I've been objecting to their figures. I think they're too low. I just don't think we realize how much the hit is going to be three months from now, six months from now, nine months from now. And I would like to see a little, you know, an increase of, say, 25 or 30% of what our hit we think is going to be. Secondly, the other reason I mention that is we do get sales tax from clothes and apparel business and a nearly 100-year-old, I don't know how old Neiman Marcus is, but Neiman Marcus is a very high-end store and they filed for bankruptcy today. And the COVID's put them out. One of my clients that I've had for 18 years told me today of his 35 employees, he's shutting and he's not coming back. So I think, I think we're a little bit light on our estimates. Next, you don't list down the property tax revenue drop estimate base. And a lot of this you really don't know because we, we don't know if the folks, let's say at Logan's, that have said they're going to close for good or Old Chicago said they're going to close for good. We don't know if the property owners are going to pay their property tax. But I know we run around 97, 98% collections, which is great. But I would like to see in our reporting that you put down the estimate for property tax revenue not able to be collected. And then I wanted to see if Mayor Pro Tem Jensen was ready to at least discuss the million-
Yeah. Councilman Dawkins, we're going to come to that at the end. And we want Tracy to give her a full budget presentation. Then we'll, we'll have a special time for her.
Sounds great. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Davis?
I'm good. I'm good.
All right. I think that was all of the questions that we could catch. All right. Ms. Tracy, we'll move to Mr. Whitfield, Dr. Whitfield.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. As you may be aware, staff begins the fiscal year budget preparation in the fall as departments start to craft their requests to the city manager's office. Those requests are based off of expenditure trends, service level standards, and of course, the council member priorities that are set in the strategic plan. By the spring, we begin the process of balancing the budget, looking at the projected expenditures to the projected revenues. Tonight, what we want to share a little bit about, the work that has been done to date based on the projected revenue shortfalls, as Tracy just referenced, focusing on what we're, we're projecting in the second half of this current fiscal year. And then later, I'm going to introduce some of the key revenue assumptions for FY21 as well. So to date, some of the operational responses to COVID that the city manager has done in the current fiscal year. First, non-essential employee travel and training has been suspended through, through this fiscal year. We've also instituted a hiring slowdown, which essentially is managing by vacancies, delaying our recruitments for open, various open positions. And the city manager has the approval of essential vacancies. So if you notice the announcements that come out on a bi-weekly basis, you may see that there are smaller announcements that are coming out from our human resources and development office. We also are looking at for the fiscal year 23rd and 4th quarter, our CIP and TIP projects, and looking at what can be deferred and potentially the possibility for eliminating some of those projects. Finally, we've looked at discretionary spending on our supplies and materials and make sure that we reevaluate, reevaluated that. Now, moving forward into this particular fiscal, the recommended budget fiscal year '21, we tend to do a lot of the same things every year because a lot of times that we have more of the requests are higher for our expenses than what we currently have in our revenues. So one of the things that is looked at is vehicle replacement program and making some adjustments to our vehicle replacement program. We have a robust vehicle replacement program. Also, each year, the departments have an opportunity to do new initiatives requests. And we, this year, the city manager's office has eliminated the current city department and new initiative requests. So for all of the departments that have put into their base budget request, any new initiatives for fiscal year '21 that are not in this current fiscal year, they have been eliminated to date and not baked into the budget for the recommenda- recommended FY21 budget. So essentially, that means maintaining the le- the level of service that we currently have at best. In addition, we looked at our general employee pay plan and our public safety pay plans, the step plans, and looking to modify those. That will be a larger discussion at a later point. Travel and training requests for fiscal year '21, as well as additional studies, have been reduced by a good percentage in FY21. We're also looking at opportunities for reorganizations, but then the larger organization. And of course, there are potential fee increases to our enterprise fund to make sure that we keep those enterprise funds self-sufficient. And last but not least, the importance of the strategic use of fund balance for one-time expenditures. So if we have any one-time expenditures that are in budget requests, those are some of those items that can be pushed over to the- those are some of those items that can be pushed over to the fund balance. Of course, that is something that is tremendously important because we do not want to make, make sure that we have a structural deficit in the current budget. So those are just looking at things that are one-time expenditures and not ongoing costs. And with that, I'll stop for any questions or comments.
I did have one before I go to Councilmember Dawkins. You know, you mentioned Neiman Marcus, as well as some of the other retailers who've been under pressure because of online shopping habits versus traditional retail. I think COVID with making a shelter in place has made the internet and online options even more available. My question for maybe Ms. Tracy, or you, Councilman Dawkins, being our NLC representative, is there any talk about municipalities getting a share of online store sales and how that tax will be distributed?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. That's, that's one of the National League of Cities action items. However, I can tell you that there does not seem to be an appetite for the cities by, by the Congress. This next stimulus round, this round, I don't know what it, it may be round four now, which should pass this week. I didn't see anything in this proposal, so I, and you're exactly right. The, the shelter in place has caused online sales to skyrocket and bricks and mortar have, have very much suffered. But the big box stores like Target or Walmarts, you know, Lowe's, Home Depot, it looks like they are jammed. So, because there is no social distance in being practiced whenever I go to those stores. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Tracy, do you have something to add? Are you hearing anything from the state side?
Yep, well, if the question is, do we get sales taxes from online sales, the answer is yes. So just because people are shopping online doesn't mean we don't get sales taxes. They get distributed, they don't get distributed the same way as taxes on sales that occur locally, but we do get a share based on a, per capita share of our population as a percentage of the entire state. So we do, we do get some sales taxes from online sales. And to return to, I think it was Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin, you had a question as to what that decline was a percentage of our total revenues in the general fund if we compare to the original budget?
I think, I think it was Councilmember Waddell.
Okay, sorry, Councilmember Waddell, sorry. If the, the $4.9 million for next fiscal year would have been about 2.9% of the revenues for the general fund from the original budget for FY '20. Does that help put that in perspective?
Oh, she's nodding yes, and she's set to speak after Councilmember Ingram, so Councilmember Ingram and then Waddell?
This, my first question is for, is for Dr. Whitfield. Dr. Whitfield, you mentioned something in regards to employee pay. Are, any of our employees, more specifically our frontline employees, have they been requesting hazardous pay? Do we have any, anything to speak to that? Do you see that if we don't, do you see it, see it being something to come? That's my first question.
Yes, ma'am, I'm going to do some deferral to the city, city attorney a little bit on that and city manager, but I know there has been some conversation at ICM May and other links around that particular issue. I haven't, I haven't heard of anyone within our organization that has requested that, we do not have that.
Okay, then my second question is for Ms. Broyles. You just mentioned when you were answering Councilmember Dawkins' question in regards to the sales tax, online sales tax. Do we receive that percentage in, in response to COVID, or that is something that was already in place?
That was already in place, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Oh, really quickly, do you see that percentage going up in response to COVID?
Well, I'm sure where the sales taxes that we'll get from the brick and mortar stores will go down, the sales taxes from the online merchants will go up. But overall, just because of the economic change in terms of, you know, people being unemployed and not being able to work and businesses not doing their purchases, we are anticipating those declines generally, as I said, for the last quarter, about 20%. The first quarter of next year, about 9% declines and then gradual recovery.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Ingram, Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you, Dr. Whitfield. You referred to some reorganization that will be going on. Can you, can you break that down a little bit for me? I think what I was understanding you to say was learning how to do, I guess, more with less. Is that accurate? And if so, can you just speak a little bit to that in terms of how that affects our employee population and, and what you mean by that?
Yes, ma'am, let me try to take that one, Telly. What he was talking about is that these are all the things that we look at when we're trying to balance a budget about, as you said, how can we do things more with less? How can we shift responsibilities? We have no definite plans for that now. It is just that those are the strategies that we employ year in and year out to try to figure out, is there a better way for us to deliver services? There is anticipated to be some restructuring that was already ongoing, probably in Parks and Recreation, that had nothing to do with COVID. It will allow us to be more responsive to the district, which is the Parks Recreation District, which is not the city's contribution. By adding, I think, an analyst on that side, that would better allow us to be responsive there. I know that there have been, as part of the new initiative requests that Dr. Whitfield mentioned, some of those new initiatives did include a request for reorganizations or additional staff. And pretty much, once we get the budget somewhat in a state of balance, we'll go back and start looking at those to see if they in fact make more sense or less sense. But at present, we really don't have a planned reorganization. I think he was, we were just simply talking about, those are the strategies that we go through on an annual budget preparation schedule.
Okay, and the last part of my question would be to Ms. Broyles. I don't profess to be a budget guru, so help me understand the impact that 1% makes when trying to really get a budget together. If we're saying that the, the impact of COVID is about 1% on the entire budget, is that a negligible impact, or is that like a catastrophic, we have to do some real trimming and, and make some real changes type of, of difference? Because to me, it sounds like the dollar off of every 100. So how, how does that all kind of play out when you're working in budget?
It's certainly not insignificant. And when you consider the fact that most of our budget is comprised of personnel, those costs continue. And you don't have a lot of flexibility for reductions there. So we, we, we always have to make tough decisions to balance the budget. They'll just be even more difficult this year because we'll be beginning with a larger gap than we typically have.
Thank you, Councilmember Kinston.
Can you give an example of what some of the one-time expenditures could be?
Yes, ma'am, it could be furniture, office equipment, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dawkins, round two? Oh, did I take your first round, you answered my question?
That's all right, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir, Dr. Whitfield or Doug? I was listening, but I, and then, of course, I heard 1% and that, like Council Lady Waddell had mentioned, and that would be like 1.6 million, I think, if our budget's 169 million, or somewhere in that neighborhood. But, Telly, do you have a, an estimate on the, this total amount of money that we may need to cut, sir?
Yes, yes, sir.
Telly? Telly?
I got you.
Go ahead, Mr. City Manager.
Well, Council, one of the things that, when we showed you the initial calendar, was that we are still knitting the budget together. Before we talk about a gap, we've got to get your concurrence on a couple of key items which are coming up in just a moment. Based upon which way Council wants to lean one way or the other, the gap may get bigger or the gap may get smaller, as well as we, if you, if, if revenues are, don't match expenditures, then we have to reduce expenditures to match the revenues. And so if part of our conversation in a little bit is trying to talk to increase those revenues to cover that $7.7 million revenue shortfall that Tracy mentioned, if we focus on that tonight, that may get us a little bit further. We are still refining the budget ask and numbers and are hesitant to give any type of gap analysis tonight because we still have at least another three weeks to, of work that we need to do before we're ready to release that number fully.
Yeah, I'm off mute. Reserving my right just for a couple more minutes. I wanted to make sure the council was aware that my guidance is we've got to get this number as close as we can get it. And then we've got to discuss how we go about making the adjustments. And then lastly, we have to figure out, you know, I will not support a tax increase this year on the, on the property owner. So, you know, that's just, the amount of money we're talking is probably going to be closer to, you know, $12 million. If we got 7.7 here, and we got 4.8 billion there, that's 12.5 million. And that's what we think we know about right now, and there's more coming. We have not seen the worst of this yet. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilman Dawkins, that was, that was two slash three rounds, so. All right. Got a Councilmember here?
Yes, sir, thanks, Mayor. Help me understand this, Ms. Broyles or whomever. I, I know that we are expecting, we're projecting this shortfall, this 7 million-plus shortfall, but this additional funding that we are possibly expecting, or we have great desires to, to receive from, from, from PWC, for example, and whatever funding that we are going to receive in different departments as far as the, the CARES Act goes. Isn't, help me understand for me, isn't that money that, that will also help refurbish this shortcoming that we're having discussions about right now? Isn't that hopefully where that will be going?
Yes, sir, we are actually moving to that in the next section, which is where we're going to talk about those key revenue assumptions that we're, we're, we want to cover. One of those being, as Councilmember Dawkins said, one of the revenue assumptions that we are making is that there will not be a property tax increase. And so when we get to that point, which is coming up almost next, we will be able to cover how, through a strategic use of the CARES Act funding, fund balance and potentially funding from an additional transfer from PWC that we would be able to smooth out, or, or to use the, the word that we're so familiar with now, flatten the curve of the loss of our revenues. So if we can just hold you for a little bit longer, we'll get there as quickly as we can. But that's the next one question, sir.
All right, thank you, Councilman here, Councilman Davis. Who? Oh, Councilman here. He's got you muted, hold on, sir.
Okay, I think they're doing that over.
All right, go ahead. Okay. You had a follow-up to your question?
Well, not to that one, but a new question.
Okay, well, let me, let me catch on the second round. I've got some that are still making their way around for the first round. I'll be right, we've got you down. Councilman Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Based on what city manager said, reserve my questions for the end of the presentation.
All right, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. Is this the time, city manager, where we can discuss the, the conversation that we've been having in terms of the public safety and the infrastructure bond? Or is that coming at a later point in this conversation?
Well, Mr. Manager, are you muted?
No, I'm, that is a conversation that we had not, we're ready to have with Council whenever y'all are ready to have it. But the guidance that we thought we'd receive was that we would delay the conversation on that for some time. But at any time the Council's ready to discuss it, we, as we've shared, I think it was last month or earlier this month, the, the days are running together. Originally, we had proposed to look at something in the fall, but that, that has now been delayed.
Well, I had submitted a request, not only to the mayor but to the council, for us to have that conversation this evening because it's been pushed. You know, originally, we were supposed to have this conversation during the April work session, according to our minutes from our March work session. However, based upon what some council members felt was consensus out of small group meetings, it has continued to be pushed. And so I've, I've requested and requested, you know, directly of the mayor and received affirmation, I, I thought that we would be able to have this conversation during this budget conversation tonight. So is, did I not get accurate, did I not understand that email accurately?
Is that question for me or for city manager?
I guess it would be for you, Mayor.
So what I think is, as I have said in the email, because of COVID, because of the things that we're dealing with, and the fact that we've have, you know, new council members, I wanted to begin the budget discussions early, which now by doing it tonight, as we saw, Ms. Tracy said, the original calendar, I think this was originally scheduled for May 11th. With that being said, I think that they're sharing revenues with us. The manager will present a budget for final approval to the city council, the way it normally works. And revenue sources, as she's talked about that tonight, have been projections of, of bringing in less revenues. Did hear the manager, as he spoke about revenues, say that he was not anticipating recommending any kind of tax increase. So I think as we talk about revenues and expenses, about what stays, what goes, what new initiatives, what holds, that's all intertwined into tonight's budget discussion.
That's not.
Right, and so I guess to answer your question is, if that is an appetite that the manager's prepared to discuss, or Council wants to have that discussion, I think it all starts with a budget discussion tonight, which that would be a part of whatever discussion we have, in my opinion. I hope that answers your question.
It didn't answer my question because my question specifically was, I sent an email out in conjunction with councilmembers Kinston and councilmembers Ingram, requesting that we have a conversation, that we publicly have a conversation about, we, what we privately had conversations about in small group meeting. In small group meeting, we discussed specifically the infrastructure bond and the public safety bond, and whether or not we would move forward with that. I made a request at that point that we have a conversation about it during the next public meeting, which if I'm not mistaken, was the April work session. I requested that it be added to the April work session agenda. However, with the exception of myself, councilmember Ingram, and councilmember Kinston, everybody else voted not to put that on the agenda. So my request was that we talk about it this evening, since it has been pushed from each of those meetings. Now, I have received several emails from council members indicating that they felt we already came to consensus not to have this conversation. But we received guidance that you cannot come to consensus in small group meetings because they are not publicly noticed and because they do not have a, a quorum of the council president to be able to make decisions. So my question specifically was, can we have now the conversation that we've neglected to have over the last two meetings?
As, as I said, Councilmember Waddell, in your email that you referred to, you named a number of things. You wanted to talk about public infrastructure bond, PWC budget. And I said that we would cover a gamut of those things, which certainly that is. And as you talk about the process, some of that didn't quite happen the way that you described, some of it, you know, but, but that may or may not be the case. What I'm saying, I guess, which gets us to the bottom line is, the council, well, pardon me, the council, when asked during the small group discussions, which every level of government has, has small group discussions of budget or subcommittees, was specifically asked if they were inclined to ask the citizens to have a property tax increase in the middle of a pandemic. And pretty much the consensus was not. And I think that's why the manager deferred and said that he had thought he received. that he had thought he received guidance. So pretty much I'll refer the rest of the question to you, but I'm sure the council uh, can speak for themselves. But certainly, I'm on the record by saying this has been stated for years that it's important to all of us. But every level of government is trying to figure out how to get money into the hands of citizens and not take it out. And so I definitely am not favoring asking citizens to pay an additional property taxes this year, including that, which that question directly relates to that. But, Mr. Manager, can you answer a question more directly?
Mayor, this is um, a policy decision of the council. I thought that um, based on the small group meetings, that we would not have the um, the conversation to put this on on the agenda. However, we are here tonight and that um, the council will decide and give us guidance as to how you'd like to proceed.
Well, the small group meetings, uh, if I recall, was not about putting this on the agenda. The small group meetings were saying that, did you want staff to put any more resources in preparing for the bond slash tax increase? Is that right?
The earlier calendar that we shared um, was that in order to do a G O bond referendum for the fall, the latest that we would be able to start the discussions would be on April fourteenth. And um, in preparation to make sure that we did not miss that window, there was, staff did seek consensus from council as to whether or not um, this was the year to move forward with a G O bond referendum, which, as you said, would, if approved by the voters, would have added um, a certain amount on the tax rate. But that was um, uh, the consensus that we received from the council members who were able to participate, which I can't remember if anywhere out or not, don't know if um, one member may have been out of country, but um, was that um, the consensus was uh, that now, as as you said, Mayor, would not be the time to move forward with the G O bond referendum um, or then any requisite tax rate increase that may be generated if the voters approve the G O bond.
All right, Councilmember Waddell Wright, and then Hair and Ingram.
Uh, is it, is it me or Waddell?
Uh, I think that was, it's it's you, sir.
Okay, um. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm kind of getting a little, you know, um, disappointed with of some of our council members as to who um, using the the democratic structure of um, you know, majority. And so when when it comes to this G O bond referendum, uh, we talked about it in small group and and had a consensus. It wasn't anything that we're trying to hide from the public. We're trying to prep for, you know, balancing a budget. And now that the COVID has hit us, that has brought another layer of complications um, to balancing a budget that was already strained. Um, I'm sure that every member of the council would love to have sidewalks uh, throughout the city and all the things that um, councilwoman Waddell is lobbying for, that we've been lobbying for for years. Um, but, you know, when we look back at the budget and what we uh, did last year, the year before, uh, when it came to um, you know, solid waste, uh, stormwater and things of that nature, there were fee increases already. At this time, we see the struggle of our citizens just to get by and make ends meet, and we're trying to come together just to feed people and giving food. So I I I would um, just recommend that we we do put this on a whole. And I mean, a bond referendum that will will inquire a tax increase uh, at this time, I don't think it would be a wise choice, if that's what the councilwoman is saying, that she wants to get that on the agenda for next uh, voting cycle. Um, I, you know, I just would not vote and support that at this time. And 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 for us to be going back and forth over and over and over, and when we could be going on doing the people's business as we all understand uh, when it comes to what the impact of a bond referendum would have on our city and our citizens at this time. So that's all I needed to say. Thank you.
All right, uh, Councilman Ingram? Oh, it was, yeah. It was who? Yes, Councilmember Ingram Davis and Hair, and Waddell.
Um, good evening, council. Um, I I I would like to make make a very brief comment, and it is not to lobby for anything. But I would, I do want to say, as we are proceeding through this time, um, I think we need to be, we we need to be very mindful of the comments we display on each others. Whether we are disappointed in each other, whether we believe we're acting out of democratic values or republican values, however it may be, we need to be mindful of of how we are carrying each other throughout this conversation. If you are disappointed, keep it to yourself. If you are.
Councilmember Ingram, you got to get to a point pertaining to this. You can't, you're not.
I'm saying.
So, Councilmember Ingram, please make your point pertaining to this subject, but don't lecture the council. We're not hearing that tonight, so please make your point.
Okay, Mayor Colvin, whether you want to hear it or not, that was my point.
All right. Thank you for your time. Uh, Councilman Davis. Is he muted?
Yeah, um, Mr. Mayor, council, uh, in my personal opinion, it's it seems as if there's some some misunderstanding, that there's not clarity. It it it's coming across as if we've had a lot of small group discussions about um, council's intent, desire, appetite for entertaining the topic we're discussing, meaning um, um, bond. Um, and at this stage of the game, I, in my personal opinion, I think we should just bring it to a motion, make a public vote, and that vote should center around determining if council has an appetite to discuss this topic again until next year's budget cycle. With what we're facing, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Wright, that there are so many other topics and challenges that we're facing. Um, right now, the people deserve our complete attention on COVID nineteen, the start of this economy, protecting our citizens. That's first and foremost. As an elected official, the safety of our citizens is our first requirement, the safety of our citizens. And as we're going into the the budget season, um, we're already going to be um, bootstrung and bootstrapped for a lot of other topics and things that we got to cut. But at this point, if there's a, if there's any confusion, have someone make a motion. Let's make a vote. Let the democratic process work. Let's move on to the work of the people. That's my comment. That's my request.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. Uh, Councilman Hair.
Counsel, so I have no problem also if we move forward with an up or down this evening, i- if that's possible during a work session. But I was, I very much understood that, at least I very much thought I understood, and I can be clarified or corrected uh, this evening, that the majority or the consensus of the council, there was no appetite, there was no desire, especially what we've been dealing with, our entire country has been dealing with, with this COVID nineteen issue, to put any additional uh, tax stress, and we can wrap it up any kind of way that we might want to, but any type of additional uh, tax or something along that line for uh, citizens. Uh, we're, uh, the citizens across the board are dealing with quite a bit at this time, and I don't want to continue to reiterate what everyone is saying. But I have no problem if if we want to do that tonight. I am not in support of putting any additional tax burden on the citizens of Fayetteville tonight, this year.
All right, and uh, go to Councilman Waddell.
I'm very grateful, first of all, to hear both councilmembers Hair and Councilmember Davis acquiesce to the request that I made during our last work session, which was for us to have an up or down vote. I do have a couple of points that I'd like to make based upon the narrative that's being spread regarding my request, so that I can clarify specifically what my request is. First and foremost, I'm not requesting a tax increase. What I'm asking is for us to continue the conversation to find out what our options are, which is what we said from the very beginning when we started having the conversation about a public safety bond and about an infrastructure bond. I wish to remind everybody who was on council last year and everyone who paid attention to budget conversations last year that we didn't feel, not we, because I disagree, that there were council members who didn't feel like it was a good time at that time to talk about a public safety bond or an infrastructure bond because it was a reelection cycle, which again was mentioned when we had this conversation about moving it to next year during our small group budget work sessions. I'll be happy to share that recording with anybody who'd like to be refreshed about that. But because it's going to be a reelection year coming up next year, it will probably, again, not be a good time according to some of my fellow council members. The bond was an increase of, according to our, I think it was Jay Tolan who reported to us, the bond would have been a thirty eight dollar increase annually, thirty eight dollars per year for a homeowner with a home valued at a hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. And that was to cover seventy five million dollars of improvements for both public safety and infrastructure were concerned. As many of my counterparts pointed out, we've been talking about this for a number of years. I agree with you, Councilmember Davis, the safety of our citizens is number one. And when we have citizens who are walking on dirt paved paved paths to and from bus stops, when we have people who are attempting to drive up and down very raggedy streets in their vehicles, I think that's a safety issue that we need to focus on. And because there are ten of us on this council, it doesn't require us to all focus on the same aspect of their safety. And so I resubmit to the council that I do believe, and we said as a collective, that the reason we were pursuing the type of bond, the G O bond, was because we wanted to give the voters the opportunity to decide if they wanted to take this on versus us taking it, because we were presented a number of ways that we could get to this seventy five million dollars that did not require a a a tax increase or a vote of the voters. So because of that, I resubmit to my counterparts and to anybody listening to this that this is an important conversation. It has been pushed a number of times. I do understand where we are with COVID. I have a family member battling it. My best friend's husband is battling it, one of my very good friends. I understand what people are going through, and I sympathize. But I also recognize that when we come out of this crisis, we're still going to have things that we must face and deal with where our infrastructure is concerned. And you cannot come to, our own attorney let us each know, you cannot come to consensus in a small group meeting. That's not how it works. Consensus can only be gained when there is a public meeting and there is a quorum of the council, and that never happens in small group. And so I submit to each of you that you are inaccurate when you say we came to a consensus. Yes, in three separate meetings, we have people give their 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 perspective, three different meetings, three different topics of conversation. I've been asking consistently, let's come together. And if we're there now, wonderful, let's do that. Let's come together and let's let it be known where we stand in terms of public safety and infrastructure as far as this year's budget is concerned. And then we can be done with it. And that's my request, Mayor.
Thank you. And I will just clarify this. The city manager asks for direction, not consensus. We can't take formal action in small group meetings. None was taken, but he asked for direction, and that has been uh, the standard operating procedure since I've ever been on council, that managers uh, meet during budget time to ask for direction as the way to put their resources. Um, however, uh, we are where we are tonight. Um, I think that uh, there is probably every single council member I've heard over the last several years uh, understands the importance of of in infrastructure. In fact, two councils ago, we doubled the amount of sidewalks that were going out on the street. And there may be other methods to use as we go through this budgetary process to invest additional dollars in there. But I think what is loud and clear is that it is irresponsible for us to put any of our political agendas ahead and ask these people in this community who are going through the worst economic crisis of our lifetime to pay any extra money this year. And we need to figure out how to make it work without doing that to them. And so this can, uh, from what I understood, the manager to say that there had to be an education campaign, there had to be public hearings, and we would look very, very confused by what the rest of the world is worrying about how to recoup and recover and respond to COVID, to be having public hearings and discussions about putting uh, additional taxes on the backs of their citizens doing that. I think would be unique. But if that uh, we have, we will move on now to the budget discussions of Tracy, uh, unless you are making a formal motion of some type. Uh, but uh, we'll we'll do, we'll cover that at the end, and I didn't didn't see whether it was any action.
What are you, what are you asking me to make make a motion? Are you asking?
Well, we've had, we've had two or three rounds of of discussion about it. Uh, Angel Point, and I think, I think several council members have made their responses. And so uh, the manager, I think, was going to cover some of the revenue expense options as we got a little later into the budget. So um, just like I asked for Councilmember Dawkins to uh, to hold it, the specifics of what he had to say to the end, to the after the end of the presentation, we'll circle back just to make sure that we've covered that. Uh, Mr. Manager or Ms. Tracy Bross, can you move on to your next section? Is he muted?
Yes, Mayor and council members, um, where we were moving to was to discuss um, the key revenue assumptions that we are using to um, prepare the recommended budget. The first being that um, there would be no proposed change to the ad valorem tax rate. The other is that um, in order to make that happen, um, we need to take pressure off of the general fund for those enterprise funds, which actually receive a transfer each year. Um, as you may recall, um, during the current budget year, we had um, proposed a fifteen dollar increase to the solid waste um, fee um, to offset, but without that, we had to make a contribution from the general fund to the solid waste fund. Um, the need for um, an increase in that fee or another transfer from the general fund exists. And so in order to be able to prepare a budget, um, the assumptions we're making are, number one, that there won't be a tax rate increase, but there would need to be a proposed um, increase to our solid waste fee to uh, move that fund back towards self sufficiency. We would not be proposing a stormwater fee increase at this this year. And we would hope to use the CARES Act funding, primarily the, I think it's nine point eight million dollars that we received uh, award um, from for for FAST, our transit system, in order to um, sustain um, ourselves in the out years and alleviate some of the pressure on the general fund, the transfer from general fund to the transit fund. And those are kind of the key revenue assumptions um, that we made. Again, no tax rate uh, increase, adjustments to fees, uh, solid waste fee being the number one uh, fee, um, no increase in the solid way, I mean, stormwater fee, and then to use the CARES Act funding to smooth out um, the need for additional or resources from the general fund to transit, and we're not proposing a transit fee increase either.
Uh, Mr. Manager, before I go to Councilmember Hair, what is the delta or the deficit that you're describing for solid waste that was requiring you to ask for a fee increase?
Last, uh, this current year, we were asking for a fee increase of fifteen dollars. Um, and moving, looking at the budget um, for next year and preparing the base budget, I believe that in order for the fund to go to full um, self sufficiency, we were looking at um, had more than doubled that amount this upcoming year. Through um, use of what we believe would be um, some savings as it relates to maybe vehicle replacements, um, some adjustments that we're making or would be proposing to make um, to how we deliver some of the services. Um, I believe that the amount that we are looking at is somewhere um, more than double the fifteen dollars that we were asking for this year.
Okay, what I'm asking is, what amount, what is, what is the dollar amount of a shortage that you're saying you have, number one? And just for the listening audience and maybe some of the new council members, we have certain funds, solid waste being one, that's an enterprise fund or a fund or self containing fund. And there are things within that fund that kind of exist just like our overall budget. So how much are you asking for? And this is prior to the council making a decision about what things come off the table, what things are held or pushed back. What is the amount of money that you're saying you need? What does fifteen dollars per uh, resident generate? And that is not just paid by property owners, that's paid by anyone that gets a trash can?
It's only paid by those folks who um, receive the trash service. It's about sixty thousand households. So every dollar equates to about sixty thousand dollars and some change. And one of the things to um, Mayor, um, that. And one of the things to, Mayor, that I would prefer not to do tonight. Is I would prefer not to share information about the hole or the gap in some of these funds. The primary purpose of the discussion is to say, council as from consensus. There is between looking at a tax rate increase. Service cuts or an increase in the solid waste fee. Is there some consensus that there, that we're moving in that direction? One of the things that makes putting the budgets together very difficult for many communities. Is the fact that I can't give you an unbalanced budget. When I present the budget to you, it must be balanced. And that's when, when I deliver it to you, that's when council says. Well, in lieu of a fee increase over here, you make a cut over there. And so what I'm looking for tonight is hopefully is consensus that. The goal that we had had for the last couple of years is that our enterprise funds would move towards self-sufficiency. Meaning that the expenses to run those fees would be covered by the revenues generated. And the beauty of an enterprise fund, particularly in solid waste. Is that the people who enjoy the service are the people who pay for the service. And so if we are looking at our largest taxpayer, let's say the mall. Then the mall would not be paying to subsidizing my trash collection service or yours or anyone else's because again. Ideally, it would be paid for by the fee. But if pressed, we could go there, but again, my preference would be. Not focus on the whole, but to focus on policy.
I understand. I got you. I do have a couple of questions for you. Councilmember here.
Mayor, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir.
Where, where are we now on our? Fund balance amount and? What is? I guess the, the level that we try to, where are we now? And what is the level that we normally try to keep it?
Tracy, do you want to cover that?
Yes, sir. We are projecting, we're still, we're still tweaking current year projections. But we are projecting that we will end this fiscal year with about thirty million dollars of fund balance.
Okay, counsel. Is he talking? Counselor here is talking.
Yes. The fire keeps getting unmuted. So around about the end of the year, we're gonna. Looking at having thirty million. So then what is our, what is always our forecasted look? Amount, what is our?
Mr. Here, if we could, there's a little bit of a strategy here that we have. For how we've built the presentation tonight. If I could just move toward that a little, I'll do a much better job of moving toward us, toward that in just a second. Because part of it is, is that. All of the questions that you're asking, based on your history on council. Are all the questions that we go through every year in preparing the budget. And before we get to how much of the fund balance we're going to use. I'd like to, I think it'd be beneficial for us to cover one or two more items, but Mayor, if there are any other questions?
Yeah, yeah, we do have, have one. So, Councilmember Davis.
I'm not done.
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not done. I'm not done. I'm about to stick my finger all the way inside. Look, just, we did have some discussion. I mentioned that I heard, I remember the city manager having some discussion with us about restructuring. Of our, I think he said of our recycle. And maybe even perhaps restructure of our yard waste. From the standpoint of pickup. And I think we were trying to see if there was any way we could. Restructure the pickups to a less or a lesser amount of the pickup. Which will kind of help build the revenue up in that area. Did we not have some form of a discussion about that? Did you bring that up at one time?
We are in our second, I think it is year of a five-year or third year of a five-year contract. That I think expires on twenty twenty-two. We've looked at the contract as well. But we also ran, asked our waste recycler, waste management. And what they shared with us last week was that we are, that service is utilized by about seventy to eighty percent of our households. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that it is used exclusively by those households, but it is a very popular service. If in fact you were to remove that recycling component. Because what we charge is a solid waste fee, we don't charge a recycling fee. Then that might take pressure off of the fee. But the main drivers of the cost in our recycling. I mean, in our solid waste department and our fee. Are our personnel that we, that we hire. It is the equipment that we own. It is the maintenance on the equipment that we own. It is the service on the carts which we own. Level of services that such as yard waste and bucket pickup.
Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir.
I, I follow you and I wasn't speaking of that. I thought that we were having a discussion on. Let's say, for example, we do recycle. And I know, I heard what you said about the, the contract. But if we did recycle to. Bi-weekly, for example, instead, instead of once a week or something along that line. I thought we were having.
We, we did, we, we did, Councilmember here. Waste management charges us roughly about three dollars per container every week they pick it up, which is about. Sixty thousand times three dollars, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a week, tremendous amount of money. So we were discussing if we changed that to every other week, what that would look like. As it relates to the contract, they received confirmation back from the attorney that the contract is only. Valid if appropriation is made by council every year. So it's only five years if you continue to make five years for appropriations, but there's an out if council makes a change. So. We can do it and I think, I think what the manager is saying is that we could kind of drill down into the, into the numbers. About how we, you know, take out what or change what or keep what or delay. I think he was trying to avoid getting deep, deep into the numbers tonight.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
But I understand, but I was just also just thinking of ways as, as he suggested. How we can sort of put something back. Into our, back into our budget, but I understand. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis.
Mr. Mayor, Council, if I may lean on council for a second. We're, we're, we're having a lot of discussions and we're moving through a list of topics. That all are related to the budget, budget cycle and things of that nature. But I really believe that it's important. That we bring resolution to the previous discussion we're having. On tabling any and all infrastructure. Bond discussions until fiscal year twenty twenty-one. I think that Councilwoman Waddell has requested that we make a, a vote. On it and I think we owe her and ourselves and the citizens that vote. With that being said, if I'm in order.
Councilman, Councilman, Councilman Davis. What we were going to do was to, I'll circle back to you. I've got a list. Of everyone, everyone I'll circle back to at the end of, at the end of the manager's presentation. So I've got you, I've got you added and noted, sir.
Okay.
All right. Council, Councilwoman Ingle.
Yes, my question is for city manager. The, and, and I'm thankful that Councilmember here brought it up. And I'm thankful that the Mayor, Mayor Kovan also mentioned it about going into the details of the numbers. And Councilmember Davis just stated it. We are, we're, we're going through a lot tonight. But for me, I don't have really anything in front of me. To go by to, and I'm just taking this in, I'm writing things down. When will we be able and how soon will we be able to visualize and go into these numbers? And really start to have these conversations, city manager?
Yes, ma'am. How the budget is prepared, like I've mentioned, I have to give you guys a balanced budget. And I can't, a lot of the direction that the council gives in order for us to prepare the budget. Is given to us during your strategic planning retreat and in any subsequent meetings that you have. As you'll recall, we actually brought you the CIP, I think in February, the capital improvement plans. And one of the things that we are doing tonight is through kind of my, our discussions at this phase. I'm confirming what the guidance that I think I've been given. Through my individual conversations and collective conversations from council at this point. Such as number one, a desire not to have a property tax rate increase this year. A desire for us to continue our efforts responsibly to move our enterprise funds to self-sufficiency. Not to look at a increase in our stormwater fee. We've done an awful lot in that area and we have a five-year master plan that we're working on. I mean, three-year master plan we're, we're trying to complete. We have five-year projects that we're working on. We also have not expensed all the money in our drainage assistance program and some other things, but we're not proposing a fee increase in stormwater. And we're also not proposing a fee increase right now on transit. In order to make that happen and knit this budget together. Again, with no tax rate increase. We're going to be looking at using the CARES Act funding that we received. And to offset the general fund contributions to our transit fund. Which we will be able to provide some information on that. And we are looking at a fee increase and likely service changes to our solid waste fee. Similar to the ones that Mr. Here mentioned. Similar to the ones the mayor mentioned and I think was it Mr. Dawkins as well. There are things that we can do to still make sure we have a high-class solid waste service. But one that is putting more in line the service delivery to the funding. But those are, those are large-scale things, but. If we get to, as we, as depending on whatever questions come out of this and when the staff goes back. And analyzes the meeting tonight and take any questions that council has. Of course, if we need additional meetings before we knit the budget together. We will come back to council to do that. But again, I think the high-level guidance is no tax rate increase. No fee increase on stormwater, no transit fee increase. Likely if, definitely a fee increase in solid waste, but responsibly.
Not definitely, recommended.
It'll be in the recommended budget and then council can do what you, what we figure must, but the. Then use of the CARES federal funding and then as we move into the next subject, which is if council. Moves over to increase the, ask PWC to increase the transfer from PWC to the city. And we believe that a combination of all of those tactics and funding streams. Will allow us to successfully maintain high levels of service. Not have to look at service reductions or staffing changes at this point in time. But we have, we have not yet moved to the PWC transfer issue. That's where we were moving next.
Before we do that, Mr. Manager, we did have a request for us to just take a, maybe just a short recess, maybe ten-minute recess for. Personal reasons. So we'll be prepared for PWC. That may be a little lengthy of a discussion. So we'll take. Ma'am, ma'am?
Will I have the floor when we come back?
I did not have you down after that. I thought we, did you? Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Just really, it's really quick.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
This, this, what you just stated, does that tie into the projections? Or the shortfalls that Tracy has already identified? Or when you bring that balanced budget back, that will give us more into what shortfalls that we're coming? Yes or no? And, and I can probably call you tomorrow about it.
Yes, what Tracy has identified is seven point seven million dollars to eight million dollars in lost revenues. How we prepare the budget to address that without having to make service cuts or significant staffing changes. Would be with no tax rate increase, would be trying to make the enterprise fund self-sufficient. Use of CARES funding and then the conversation we're going to have when we come back, I think, which is. The request for additional transfers from PWC.
Thank you.
All right, yep. All right, council, take ten-minute break. We'll be back. All right, council. All right, Mr. Here, get that last bite in, sir. Clean it up. All right, council, we'll call our meeting back to order. Mr. Manager, as it relates to the request for additional transfer from PWC, can you? Can you take that or is it someone else from your team?
I wondered, did Ms. Banks McGaw can have a question? I don't know if I saw her hand or. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to come make sure, ma'am.
Trying to get that sandwich down. All right, go ahead.
So right before we, we get to that. I did want to also, well, I'll bring up the safer grant at, at the end.
Well, well, let me, let me do this, just to kind of cover this. We do have people listening who, who we may assume. Know what we're talking about, just so that we have a backdrop to it. And in the Fable City Charter, as it relates to PWC, during a state of emergency. The city can request of PWC an additional transfer amount. Each year, PWC has a formula calculation that certain percentage of, of their assets or, or net asset value is transferred over to the city. As, as a part of them, instead of paying property taxes because they are owned by the city, the city asset, they, they do a transfer. And during a state of emergency, when you have shortages in revenues, expenses go up and catastrophic events. Like COVID, you're able to request. An amount over and above the transfer. The state law allows for that. And so as we get into our discussion tonight. One, a few weeks ago, after we, after I declared the state of emergency, I sent PWC a notice. That we would, after getting enough council members consensus, that we would be making an additional request. They were in the midst of a budget discussion or starting to plan their budget, just as we are in many organizations. And so wanted to make sure that they knew that a request could be forthcoming. Tonight, what we'll talk about is that council would direct the manager. As to how to frame that request, I will sign it, we'll send it over to PWC. To be discussed by the commissioners and that is where we are tonight. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Manager.
Backdrop. And so the letter that went over contemplated a, an additional transfer from PWC of ten million dollars. As Ms. Broyles covered earlier, looking at the impacts of COVID over the current fiscal year and next fiscal year. We conservatively estimated that to be seven point seven to eight million dollars. Councilmember Dawkins had mentioned that it's a great deal of unknown about that, but the. We do feel comfortable that the projected budget loss for revenues would be seven point seven million dollars. Over those two fiscal years. Given the fact that we did have CARES funding that came in from transit. Given the fact that you do have a fund balance and you have fund balance policy. Staff recommends the use of any PWC support first to help fill those revenue shortfalls. That we are seeing in, in the, over those fiscal years. So that we can maintain our higher service levels as well as not have to look at staff restructuring. And if council agrees with that and there is then additional funding. We would be hopeful to, night to be able to find out from council what you'd want to do with that remaining funding. That so that we could make sure that we prepare that for the request to PWC.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Before we went to. Uh, thank you, Mr. Manager. Uh, before we went to, okay, council questions, uh, did you have anyone else from your team, uh, Doug, that needed to clarify or that was just a basic framework, what you were giving?
Um, Tracy, Telly, Kristoff, anything else you'd like to add?
Okay, all right. So I'll go to uh, Councilmember Ingram and then Dawkins.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. As um, as Councilmember Dawkins stated order uh, or earlier in discussion about some of the businesses here with bricks and mortar. Could this requested funding be used to assist our small businesses? Um, who are struggling to uh, pay their rents? Um, I know we may not be able to help with uh, their salaries, but are we able to help with um, at least get a percentage to them to help pay their rent? Um, so, so that they, they are not having to um, pack up and leave.
Thank you. Good, great question, Councilmember Ingram. I think the business uh, council, uh, the business subcommittee, you know, you all uh, just for the listening audiences, uh, kind of encourage council to break into three subgroups. Uh, a few weeks back to plan for this moment today, which is recovery discussions. Uh, one of those uh, are business uh, business recovery and small business recovery. Uh, the other is homelessness and poverty chaired by Councilmember Wright. The other is uh, neighborhood revitalization uh, and recovery chaired by Councilmembers Hare and includes Councilmember Waddell and, and yourself. Uh, the subcommittees have been working on that. I think PWC um, basically under this particular uh, request is looking to provide emergency fundings for uh, city operations. I think that um, that very good question that you asked, I think the business uh, subcommittee is coming back with uh, that information that you asked uh, for a separate discussion with a different uh, source. And so I don't want to blur the lines tonight. Tonight is uh, keep us focused on the PWC letter, but this is a great point and I think that uh, you have some information forthcoming soon.
Just to access something you just mentioned, Mayor Colvin. When, when we initially started the discussions, when, that you, when you initially said, let's make this request an email. Small businesses were a part of it and I asked the question that I just asked because city manager just stated to see where the additional funding wanted to go, where the extra leftover funding wanted to go. So I'm asking, can addition, that extra funding go to our small businesses?
So what, what I'm saying to you is, is that in the discussion that you referenced, we made this request under the emergency declaration that it, that would include economic development, could include infrastructure, could include a gamut of things. But what I'm saying to you is the committee that has been established to deal with that has identified some information that answers your direct question that is not a part of this request. And so um, uh, if you can just separate the two for a moment, I think that you'll still get the answer. Of course, I think that you're right on, just like uh, many council members, including myself, that our small businesses here need it. It, it just may be a different approach than what you're describing. So I hope that helped you. But I'll go to Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you for unmuting me, Jennifer. Okay, two things, uh, council, just to be aware of. Uh, and city manager, I like the idea about the uh, the ten million dollar request. I, I would just uh, I'd, I'd requested a not to exceed fifteen million uh, based on these next nine months coming because we just don't know what our property tax hit is going to be. I can assure you uh, that we, like Council Lady um, Ingram mentioned, our, our bricks and mortar folks are, we're going to see quite a few, you know, go out of business and uh, not return. And we just don't know what that figure should be. I mean, we can come up with an estimate and the estimate would be a minimum of a million-dollar hit. All right, that's property tax revenue drop estimate. Second thing I would like uh, to add, um, when we make the request to PWC. And I want to throw this out for council consideration. I had, I'd said we need a minimum of a million dollars for our nonprofit charities in the city of Fayette. I know we have thirty-two that just focus on the homeless, but to a million dollars probably isn't going to get it. Um, it probably needs to be a higher dollar amount than that and that probably doesn't need to be in the business committee. You know, it may need to be the council as a whole. So my request is it, is we consider uh, adding besides the seven point seven, we add at least a million for property tax um, revenue drop estimate and then a million to a million-five for our charities.
So, so let me keep, okay, got you, Councilmember Dawkins. Let me keep those two separate, like I was telling Councilmember Ingram. So, if I, okay, so um, so one, I guess your request is saying that we're not factoring in enough because of property tax Avalon revenues for next year, which are just predicted. Um, so that can certainly be considered with this part. The part about the uh, the nonprofits and homelessness piece, I think there's a subcommittee chaired by Councilmember Wright that is coming back to us uh, in our next work session to kind of talk about the resources. When we set all this up, the CARES Act had not really clarified where those, those resources could be used. And so each one of you all, subcommittees have been focused on those areas, just like Councilmember Ingram. I think that you'll have some information that, that they're bringing us back. So let's keep, let's keep this two separate if we could uh, on that, Councilmember Dawkins. But you're just saying uh, to add an additional million for a loss of Avalon revenues. Is that correct? Okay. All right, um, council, any, all right. So um, council, if all right, Councilmember Ingram, uh, second round?
Yes, so I, I, I just want to kind of express where I'm coming from. I think it probably would have been a little beneficial if the, the task force would have been able to present before we came here to, because my fear is, and I have great, great faith in what the work we are doing in our task force, but what I don't want to see is whatever money that is coming through the task force run out and we've already allocated the funding and, and now we're just kind of having to re-go through this again. Am I making sense as to what I'm, what I'm really getting to? I just, I don't want to run out of what we're proposing in the task force and then we've already expended the ten million that we've requested.
So, so two things, guys. The request is because of a revenue shortfall, okay? And then I think that the manager, if council's inclined to allow that, will come back as that and, and his professional finance team will come back as to how that fits into all of the factors of our budget. That there are extra expenses, there are other things that, that they didn't get into tonight, as we talked about keeping everything at the twenty thousand foot level. Tonight is permission to have uh, the request, a formal request like they've asked sent to PWC. We can work through the details of what you're talking about, Councilmember Ingram, I think. And that's why the subcommittees will come back and they're going to identify monies that have been uh, allocated through the CARES Act that fits into these, into these spaces. So and that's why I want to keep this separate. Just keep in mind, tonight we've talked about revenue shortages.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all right. So Councilmember Kinston?
Quickly, Chris, being that, that we're going to okay, now, I'm unmuted. Okay, thank you. Uh, being that we're talking about the subcommittees, do you mind announcing for the citizens that are uh, participating or watching tonight, who those, who are actually on those subcommittees?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So for the business subcommittee, uh, business recovery, and these are all uh, councilmember subcommittees whose focus is for, to identify resources for recovery. Uh, the business is, is chaired by Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, it has council, councilmember Dawkins and it has uh, councilmember Davis. Um, the uh, neighborhood revitalization and recovery is chaired by Councilmember Hare as Councilmember Waddell and Councilmember Ingram as a part of that. And the homelessness and poverty recovery is chaired by Councilmember Wright. Uh, other kind of committee members are Councilmember Kinston and Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin. Did I get it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
All right, all right. Um, so council, I guess what we're coming to tonight, we understand that we do not have the full scope of our budget. I don't think PWC's expectation is that we give them all of the answers, that we are still working diligently, our finance folks are working just to see just how much the impact of this is. And I think the manager and Mr. Trejo can work through the operational details. Tonight, from a policy perspective, uh, the chairwoman has asked that we send something formal over to uh, PWC requesting uh, a uh, an amount, that amount uh, had been floated at ten million. Tonight, I heard Councilmember Dawkins uh, looked, asked for eleven. So we can talk about the gist of that, um, but, but I'll, as you all talk about this, we'll, we'll hit a round of it and then I'll circle back because just needing that clarity for uh, for that formal request to go out. So uh, Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. My understanding, when I reached out to um, Chairwoman Shaw in regards to this money from PWC was that they, she, they, that board was looking for really some detailed information on what we were requesting the money to be spent on. And my understanding when I reached out to her also was that there needed to be um, that, that the expenses did assumption was that they needed to be COVID-related. And so I, my expectation when we came onto this part of the call was that that's what we would be discussing. So is, is that not what's happening this evening? Because it sounds now like what's happening is we're being asked to agree on a number and then just submit over a letter, but a letter was our
No, ma'am, that's not what I meant. That's not what I
I'm sorry, because, thank you. Because a letter has already been submitted over from the mayor's office in regards to the potential of this request. So, so I'm not clear because again, when I spoke to Chairwoman Shaw, she was very clear in that the expectation was that council would discuss and agree on what we wanted these funds for and the amount of these funds. And that per the charter, that they would, they review that information and then we would have to agree with PWC on a final number. So I'm trying to figure out what this part of the, the
So, so when, when you, when you made the call to the chairwoman, uh, the, the understanding that I had that her board's expectations were, was to send over a formal request. I think the manager and Mr. Trejo had been discussing operationally uh, that the city's uh, revenues were going to take a shortfall. Neither when I spoke to her or the other um, commissioners, was it specific to having to know exactly to the penny what those dollars would go for. If you look at the letter, it left it very broad and I think that you know, the council can frame this however uh, you choose to do it. But the manager and Mr. Trejo had been talking about operationally how all these pieces in this request fit together. But the main thing is that uh, based on what we've heard tonight, Ms. Tracy and, and uh, the manager, that there will be a significant revenue shortfall, uh, and we haven't even factored in the expenses and all of it is due to COVID. Every bit of it is related to COVID. So Councilmember Banks?
Thank you, Mayor. That was the same question um, that I was gonna um, oppose. So again, so we're sending um, you, you're wanting us to um, take a vote on sending this uh, formal request to PWC?
Well, the manager can, can explain what he's saying. The letter that was sent to PWC basically explained that we're in a state of emergency, that there's anticipated additional expenses as well as loss of revenues. They've quantified that tonight to estimate the loss of revenue side of this around between seven and eight million dollars, according to what Tracy said. They're still in the process of putting in their budget. So the request was for PWC to factor in to their budget and process because they're going through the same thing, a request of ten, but then I heard an additional uh, request from Councilmember Dawkins. So I think it's, the letter would, would say something to that effect and would authorize the professional staffs to figure out and to bring back to us the details of how that fits into the budget. Because it's hard to have that level of detail tonight when the council hadn't heard about the overall budget, period. And so we heard just snippets of it tonight and the manager had asked that we save the detail part of what we were talking about tonight to another budget session because it's complicated as we dig into the individual funds. So tonight's request of council would be to send a formal letter over requesting PWC to uh, allocate additional ten million dollars or whatever that number is in funding because of COVID-related expenses and then this professional staff will build a criteria, I think, and bring that back to us. That's the way I understand it. Mr. Manager, is that correct?
And the, and the reason I ask, because I mean, I just, I mean, just a sentence, something I would think, I mean, as business, I would think that they would want something in writing stating, you know, some type of detail um, as far as what we're needing ten million dollars for, or up to ten, ten million dollars. That was my question because I didn't want it to be us vote on something like that and then later on find out their stipulations.
Right, well, they're, they're gonna, right, the request is going to their board for consideration and their board will put whatever kind of criteria to it at, that they choose to do. I think tonight, in this budgeting process that we use here, and we've been using since I've been here, it is a grueling process to where we're going to have to go and go through our entire budget and see what stays and what goes. What they're telling us tonight, the only definitive thing we know tonight is that we're not going to have, we're going to have eight million dollars less in revenues than we had last year. And we'll start from that point, not even to mention about the additional expenses. Tonight is a request for revenue fill of that gap and PWC's board will put together the criterias of the things that they had. All of it is COVID-related or the council can ask the manager to address certain areas about the COVID impact. So that is kind of the discussion that we're having tonight, but I don't think you're going to have it to the penny that you're going to spend it all in the following fashions because the manager didn't have a budget to tell us. You know, he didn't know where all the holes are. Tracy just identified we're working with less money. And I think that's kind of the simplest way to do it. So I'll go to count, if, yes, ma'am.
So if that's the case, shouldn't we wait to kind of get a ballpark to figure out what it is that we need the money for? Because just like Doc, uh, Councilman Dawkins mentioned, we may need, uh, we may want to request more than that amount.
Well, they've got a budget to, to put together as well. And so they've asked for this process. The chairwoman asked for us to send a formal request, like the charter says. That the council has to do a formal request. They have a budget that they have to figure. And so if we wait to the end of our budget process and request ten million dollars, they're going to also be at the end of their budget process. And it, and it, and it's, it's hard to plan that. And I think that's why she uh, encouraged us to uh, to make the request.
Okay, because formal sounds like detail to me.
Formal is more than a conversation of picking the phone up saying, can you do this or can you do that? Something in writing is what she was asking for. Uh, Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and council, that's uh, and I, and I appreciate Councilmember Banks-McLaughlin uh, bringing that up about we really don't know and that's, that's why I'd mentioned um, that we look at a not to exceed amount. And my recommendation is we, we vote tonight on a not to exceed eleven million dollars. And the reason being is our charities are hurting and um, and we do not know the impact. And uh, that's why I wanted money in there because there's a lot of charities that we support uh, in our budget uh, process each year. And for the new members, you're at a distinct disadvantage because this is your first time hearing about all this stuff. And that, and that budget document is going to be, you know, eighty, ninety pages long. And uh, uh, I feel for you. Uh, this is budget number five for me and it just doesn't get any easier. So uh, Mr. Mayor, if, if you're willing uh, to accept the motion, I'm happy to make them.
Yeah, I did, I did. I'll circle right back to you. I had uh, one other comment from uh, council member, I'll go to Councilmember Davidson and Waddell. This is Mr. Davis' first round, Waddell's second. Councilmember Davis?
Okay, um, so being a new council member, I'm listening. I do understand a little bit about budgeting. Is the budgeting deadline June thirtieth every year? Yes?
Yes, sir.
That budgeting deadline, since PWC is a part of the city, then they would, we'd have to assume that their budgeting deadline needs to be before our budgeting deadline. Because we take their numbers and um, they feed into us in some way, form or fashion. So for, for, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, you know, because I was trying to figure out the timeline also. It would appear that if we waited till the conclusion of our budget, we would miss the entire window for requesting money for their budget. And if the chairman, woman is asking to give me, and you know, in any organization, you know, um, so sometimes, some people call it corporate shadow with a bow. That was the first letter that was sent. Hey, we're going to need help. The second one is, hey, the help's going to be about this amount. And then maybe I'm listening or hearing wrong, but uh, and maybe the city management step in. City manager, will you and Mr. Trejo be working out the details as to what the, 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 the numbers are? Uh, will you guys be um, de-conflicting uh, Will you guys be deconflicting numbers or making sure that the details of the $7, $8 million match what they're proposing? Are you guys working that part?
Yes, sir. Didn't, PWC's not on to as a panelist tonight, but they don't, they also have covenants in their charter and with some of their bond agreements, which, as you know, and Mr. Dawkins knows, and I think Mrs. Jensen, who may have also served as a PWC liaison, that is required. And that's usually what we call about their daily cash, the amount of cash they have for coverage. With so many of their electric utility customers being out of, being down as part of stay-at-home order, namely, let's look at the mall and the no disconnection policy that the government implemented, we, they are probably, I can't remember the number, you might or Telly would, but more than half of their customers have maybe late. I don't I don't know that specific number. And I'm hoping if John Henderson's on the call, he doesn't print that. But they've seen a an increase in the number of people who did not pay, I guess, at the first of the month. And so in my conversations with Mr. Trago, again, he's not speaking for the commission. The commission is waiting on the letter that the mayor talked about. And in my conversations with Dave, it has been what would the commission would look at most, probably most favorably and would have staff's recommendation if the council were, if the commission was so inclined to do it, would be those unanticipated issues such as the revenue losses that Tracy covered and Mr. Dawkins talked about as well. Any other uses beyond those revenue losses or direct impacts because of COVID, as much detail as we could provide would be beneficial. But in order for them to, let's say, pull $7 million or 10 or $15 million out of their daily cash, they would have to also look at what that would do to their bottom line because, again, they have those covenants that they've got to cover. And so what I've heard tonight from council is to kind of recap, is that the request that we're sending over for whatever amount that is is would be specific, not specifically, but we're able to demonstrate to PWC that we have a revenue loss directly related to COVID of at least $8 million. If we go with Councilmember Dawkins and others, then and something that I think the mayor and others mentioned before, that there may be COVID-related opportunities that we may be able to take advantage of as well, I think that that may bolster the case for PWC to look more favorably upon that request or any other.
All right. Mr. Manager, Councilman Wright, did I see your? Yeah.
Yeah, just a question, and it may not be relevant, but based upon the the numbers, and I think we're kind of drilling down into the technical parts of where the money from PWC will be going when it's transferred to the city. And I think a big portion of that, we already can see, will be going back into, you know, general fund to cover the shortfalls. But that that's one question. And the next question would be that we've covered some things pertaining to to that, but when you got the CARES Act and you have monies also allocated for the pandemic based upon, I guess, a natural disaster, those monies, when you're talking about accumulating them, going into certain categories, overall, will that affect our total budget in a negative or in the sense, will we have enough coming out of the gate? And I think you can just, you know, add nickels and nickels and figure out, you know, on average, are are we okay? Although we don't know what the outcome of this pandemic is gonna be yet and how long that's gonna last. So, you know, what we're doing is trying to get, if you will, ahead of the wave as best we can. But I appreciate the council in in those concerns. But I think that I think that PWC understands the the gravity of this thing. And I and I think, like the mayor, you mentioned with Councilman Dawkins, whether there'll be a greater ax or not. So my question would be, you know, how would we determine whether to ask them for something greater based upon all of our numbers are not being put together or those numbers together on the back end to see really what the shortcomings will be long range? So can you help me with that, city manager, and how we're looking at that maybe after pandemic and how that will continue to affect the economy? And will that be enough or can we go back for a second ax?
Well, one of the things that Tracy mentioned, I think, was about creation of a structural deficit. And that basically is when you take revenue and it is one time in nature, but you use it for recurring expense. And so one of the goals that we would have and we would ask the council to consider, and this would be rolled into our into the recommended budget when it comes out if PWC is agreeing to the transfer, is to basically say that instead of a transfer of 10 or $15 million on May 15th, it might be that we would use strategically the CARES funding that comes in or any CARES funding that comes in subsequent. We'd also use strategically our fund balance, a consistent with council's fund balance goal. And then we would also then feather in the money if we receive any additional from a transfer from PWC. And so in looking at all of those strategies over time, I believe that would answer your question, that if we get to this time next year and our revenues are also offset, then if we're able to take the 10, 12, or whatever amount of money we get from PWC, if we get some and we're able to put some in this fiscal year to help us get over this hump, preserve some for the next year. So again, trying to flatten that curve so that we aren't looking next year, because if you introduce $10 million into the budget next year, then what are you going to introduce the following year after that? You've got to come up, you've got to replace that hole, particularly if you use it for recurring expenses. By looking at feathering it in or over time, what that would also do is, I think it would answer PWC's question about whether or not they would have adequate daily coverage for their cash. Because then it's not, you're asking for $10 million right now. It's almost like me borrowing three, $10 from, let's say, Mr. Hare. I don't I don't want $10 right now, but if you give me $3 today, $3 next week and $3 next week, you might forget that you gave me $9. You know what I mean? So but I'm not, I doubt PWC's gonna forget that. No, you won't, I know that. But so those are the strategies. What I need tonight is, and I think you've given it to me, is that we have a 7.7 to 8 million to $10 million hole in our revenues. We have a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic that has affected the entire globe. If you never believed there was a God, you need to believe it is now because nothing else could stop everything but this.
You better come on.
Once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. We have once-in-a-lifetime issue here and utilizing the goodwill we have with PWC, the refined charter, as well as some very creative thinking on the mayor's part and other council members as well, and I think a receptive chairperson and PWC commission, my proposal would be that we first look at the revenue losses that we know we have directly related to COVID. All of the other things that we've talked about about funding for small business, Cynthia Blod and Angel Wright Lanier will be giving that to the committee on Wednesday. And those minutes and notes will go out as soon as we can so the entire council sees it. I think you've all heard that the federal government is contemplating, what is it, $300 billion PPE PPP additional stimulus as well. Golden Leaf is looking at money. But we would also be proposing as part of any funds that we create, wherever that funding source comes from, that we not duplicate whatever already there, but we're very targeted to help those people I think you've heard about. But again, what I've heard tonight is we have a we have a hole in revenue of 7, 7.7 to 8 million and likely over time, as Mr. Dawkins said, of up to 10. That, I think, Mayor, is.
Yeah, I got it. We're gonna put some, we're gonna put some formality to this, substitute it, so we won't be saying it was a head nod. But I got a couple more questions and I'll circle back to council for consensus the second time, right? All right, so let me get Councilmember Hare, first round, Mayor Pro Tim, and then I'll go to Councilmember Waddell for the second round.
Unless you can answer this, Mayor, or Mr. City Manager, to our PWC liaison. And here what I'm hearing some of the council members say, and I was wondering about it myself, do we just get one ask? Are we trying to get this thing tied in to where we don't have to go back for a second ask? Or, Mayor, are you having those type of discussions with Chairman Shaw that there's a possibility that this is not the only ask?
I did not have any kind of discussion like that, but what, after reviewing the charter for this, it did allow for economic development, investment over and above the transfer amount as well as one-time ask because of state of emergency. So I didn't come to them with that. And I think that maybe until they figure out what their situation is, I think, you know, we we've sent it out there publicly that that they're preparing for 10. So I don't know if that means that's it. I guess that's my answer to it.
So let me ask you this. So you're saying that the charter, and I was trying to read myself through that, are you saying that the charter is basically saying one-time emergency ask?
No, the charter says in the state of an emergency.
In the state of an emergency, right.
Right. But it didn't say you can ask once or you can ask twice. It didn't say that, nor did I have that conversation with.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment about the 10 million. And and I mean this with all sincerity, so nobody laugh, but being the Parks and Recreation Bond Chair, sometimes we think we can build things or we need a certain amount of money, but when it comes down to it, there's other things that happen that we need. So, you know, we're saying that our budget is about 8 million deficit. So I think we should go on. I I do like what Councilmember Dawkins said about the 11, but we had discussed the 10. So we need to ask for the 10. But I do like where Councilmember Dawkins said not to exceed. We are in a good place, I feel, with PWC and they have been very receptive to us. And they understand the situation that we're in and we need to be mindful of the situation that they're in. I think if we are doing things for economic development, we can move forward and maybe they'll see things that they can help us out that they didn't realize they could. So I'm, I know it wasn't a question, but I'm saying that I'm all for the 10 million.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Waddell?
Such a, I I think that this is such a such a great opportunity for us to be able to partner with PWC. I would certainly hate for us to create a delay by not giving them enough information within our request. And so I I don't think that, I think when, and and Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we're necessarily indicating that there needs to be a to the to the dollar write-up. But I think that there should be some structure, and I think, Mayor, I heard you say this, that there should be some structure as to what we're asking for the money for. So to use the city manager's analogy, if somebody came to and asked you to borrow $10 and they said it's because I'm having an emergency, you you may want them to quantify to some degree what that emergency is. And they might might not say I'm gonna spend $3 at the gas station and $3 at the grocery store or or, you know, to to in detail, but they'll tell you, you know, the broad strokes. And I think that based upon, and I can only refer back to reading through the charter and the conversation that I had with Chairwoman Shaw, they it's it seems that they're looking for a little bit more than just, we're asking you for this money due to COVID-related expenses. And and the final portion of my comment, I'll say that I think it is very, very wise of us for any transfer that we get from PWC above and beyond the 12 million that we already get, for us to first and foremost make up any deficit in our budget so that we're not losing city staff, so that we're not having to compromise city services and we can continue to to serve our citizens in the manner to which they've become accustomed as we weather this storm. So I'm I'm very excited to hear more about this. I do hope that we will consider, you know, providing a little bit more detail and that will be a little bit more compliant with what I think that the Chairwoman may have been asking for.
Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. And what I will say is, Council, as we, before I call on Councilmember Davis, I think has has a comment or question. There's a great analogy that says that because I lost my job, I want to borrow the $10. Now, the oversight that I put in place or the restrictions or the strings that are attached to the $10 are later discussion and probably by the person who's gonna grant the request. And so maybe as their board gets this and considers this, they may say, well, we can do it with the following conditions. But right now, the guidance that I had talking, you know, from Chairboard to Chairboard was that they wanted a request from us to kind of be able to specify what the request is, the amount of the request so they can plan and how, you know, and how it relates to COVID, which I think the manager and Mr. Trago were talking through the details of that. So with that, Councilmember Davis, did I see your hand?
Um, I I really believe that we're at a point where we can make, where I I'd like to make a motion to 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 move forward with this letter resolution to PWC for the amount not to exceed $11 million, either which we know is shortfall, 1.5 is additional property tax, as Ms. Tracy highlighted, and then one 1.5 for low local non-profits and businesses. So that's my ask. The need is there. It's all COVID-related. And if there's any additional clarity that's needed, city staff, as well as the committees that you've broken us up into, the homeless, the other business committees can provide the exact bones to the fish. But those three areas, I think, provide us the necessary, the requisite $11 million, no more than $11 million ask. And the amazing thing is that if they come back and say, well, we're good with the revenue shortfall, we're good with the property tax shortfall, we're not really comfortable with the non-profit, you know, then we'll have to find other ways to kind of make up that difference. But it's easy to come down. And if they give us all of this, all of this will be used for us, I think that's our responsibility.
That's our call.
Our responsibility is that whatever we say we're gonna use for that, we focus on using it for that because these are real shortfalls. You know, that's our job as council to make sure that it goes where it's supposed to go, that compliance side. And I'm committed to that, but that would be my motion.
So thank you as a motion by Councilmember Davis. There's a second by Councilmember Dawkins. In a discussion on a motion, we'll do one round of discussion, council, very brief discussion if you choose to do it, and then we'll call the question. So I see Councilmember, who was first? Okay, Councilmembers Kinston, Wright, Ingram and Waddell. Yeah, unmuted, Councilwoman?
Thanks, Mayor. Councilmember Davis has already done it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Wright?
Yes, Mayor, and I think that Councilmember Davis had caveated that because we, you know, we were mentioning about small businesses and a portion of that, but there was nothing mentioned about the homeless. You know, so, you know, but he had mentioned we can break it down and take the meat off the fish bone later on, and I'm good with that.
All right. Councilmembers Ingram?
So really, really quickly, I'm, I I've just probably gotten a little bit confused because I thought we were just discussing from from my ask, when I asked about small businesses, I was being told that I needed to wait for the task force to bring me information. But I, this motion, Mayor, can you clear clear this up, clear this, clear this up really quickly, please?
So, yes, ma'am. The motion on the floor was for permission to send a letter not to exceed $11 million to PWC for COVID-related issues. And so the analogy was also used, not as part of the motion, for the clerk's purposes, that it's specific to the fish or the bones or the bones to the fish will be filled in later. not as part of the motion, for the clerk's purposes, that it's specific to the fish or the bones, or the bones to the fish will be filled in later.
If that was a part of the motion, that's what I was looking, if that was a part of the motion or not. So, Councilmember Davis, can you restate your motion?
A letter to PWC requesting not more than $11 million. Eight million of which has already been qualified and quantified through Ms. Tracy Boils for the hole in our revenue, 1.5 million dollars in tax loss. And then as Councilman Dawkins identified, 1.5 million dollars in nonprofits.
All right, so Councilmember Davis, you were stating those parts, but your motion was to?
Okay, I got you.
Yeah, clarify that. I think that's what's the confusion.
I apologize. I'll make a motion that we present PWC with a letter requesting no more than $11 million in support of revenue losses and economic development in direct response to the COVID-19 pandemic that we're experiencing right now.
And then that was second by Councilmember Dawkins. Is that the way you understood it, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So Councilmembers Waddell?
Thank you. So I was prepared to support the motion when I thought that it had a little bit of structure. So you guys are saying that you're just asking for the 11 million to be determined later, COVID-related, but to be determined later how the breakdown will look?
No, no. In my mind, the structure was what was stated, but I didn't think the structure needed to be a part of the motion.
That's what I thought. I thought that the original structure was a part of the motion, and the only thing that I was gonna ask Councilmember Davis is if you would take that 1.5 that's being allocated to, or if you would take anything above the eight that Ms. Boils has already indicated to make up the budget shortfall, so the additional three, and allow that to be the portion that's pending between the three committees that are currently on the floor, to be able to determine how those remaining dollars may need to be utilized between those three committees, because it was my understanding that that's kind of how this was all playing out, but it's acceptable. I can still accept your motion the way that you presented it, but I'm just asking if you may be open to a friendly amendment that would say that that money could be utilized amongst these committees as we all agree as a council to?
Suggestion before, on that, which I think is a valid point, maybe what you can do is to leave room in the motion for the professional staffs to set, to work through that, and to bring that back as to how a certain portion of it can be utilized in those areas is something for consideration. But I think if you wrap that into a motion and require that, PWC's board may interpret it that that is the ask we're making only. You see what I'm saying? And so I think the professional staffs between him and Mr. Trago can probably get us there where everybody's trying to go, but that's just something to consider. So, Mr. Davis, Councilmember Waddell is asking if you'd amend it, but maybe Councilmember Waddell, if you could leave some wiggle room, maybe for Mr. Trago?
What I'd be willing to do in terms of wiggle room, and Councilmember Davis, if you're amenable to this, I would be willing to consider if we say that the first priority of any dollars that we get from PWC will go to making up the budget shortfall for the next two budget years, and that anything over and above that would need to be determined by order of the entire council, not by staff, not by, you know, city manager, but by order of the entire council, maybe based upon the recommendation of staff. But that anything above what makes up, because I think that our priority right now with these funds are to make up our budget, and I think that Councilmember Davis acknowledged that when he said that the largest tranche of this money should go toward, you know, the making up the budgetary shortfall. But it's Councilmember Davis's motion, and as I said, Councilmember Davis, I can support it with the first way that you positioned it. I was just asking if you'd be open to that friendly amendment.
Right, right now, just to kind of recap that, there's a motion on the floor, as stated, not to exceed. There was a second by Councilmember Dawkins. In the discussion phase, Councilmember Waddell had asked if the motion that has been properly seconded is amenable to change, and so I'll get a head nod from you, gentlemen, yes or no? Or we can vote on it as it is, and I can move to the next person who's ready for discussion, which is Councilmember Banks.
I'm, Mr. Mayor, I'm open to the change that Councilwoman Waddell offered in terms of council working through the last $3 million in terms of priorities. It just needs to make sure that it is directly connected to COVID. It goes back to COVID. It comes from COVID. And that we as council determine where that $3 million goes with the advice of city manager. And I really do think the three committees are a great place to pull some of that knowledge from, since all of us are separated to do that specific work.
Okay, yeah, I got you, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Okay, thank you. So, Councilmember Dawkins, did you agree with that amendment? Yes, okay. Councilmember Banks McLaughlin? Okay, hold on a second.
I'm fine, I'm fine now.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Kinston, did you have something else?
No, sir, thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Yes, Mayor, and I agree with everything that has been said thus far. But in addition to that, the question that I had was that additional money being used for COVID is great, but the three committees that were established by yourself, if that additional money is only going to those three committees in those areas, I think that would limit, that would limit anything that will come up in the future dealing with the COVID pandemic that we might not be aware of right now, or the staff may know of some additional help that's needed in other areas right now. So I think we may be limiting ourselves if we tie that money only into those three areas right now, or we may leave it a little bit more open than just to to tie it up and tie it knotted and to say, this is it. I suppose we need additional funding in other areas that we're not aware of right now, or the staff may know better. I don't know.
Okay, well, right now, we have a motion by Councilmember Davis, an amended motion that was kind of structured the way that we spoke. And again, guys, as the professional staffs work through this, or whatever PWC's response to this, will have to be brought back to us to consider how it fits into these areas. But I think it's clear tonight that the manager has heard his, the request that we'll send is not to exceed 11, that this is to make up budget shortfalls, and if there are additional dollars, whatever that number is, that I heard, the amended motion said that they would have concentration in the areas that the three subcommittees are working to identify resources for recovery from COVID. So I think that kind of wraps up everybody's interest. I think I see he had nods. So let's take a, I think that was the last comment. So those who are in favor, can I show a show of hands? All right, Madam Clerk, that looks unanimous to me. Looks unanimous, okay. All right. Counsel, that is, that wraps it up for us tonight. Oh, oh, yeah, we've got my circle backs. So the circle backs are to Jennifer Gottlieb. You all, I apologize. So circle backs are to Councilmember Waddell, and then Councilmember Davis after that.
And Mayor? Mayor, I did have a brief discussion with the council about the SAFER grant, and just touch base on that, because the deadline is drawing now, but it won't take long.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor. So as I stated, I'm making the request that we continue the conversation about how we move forward with acquiring this $75 million for infrastructure and for public safety. I do want to very briefly remind everybody from June the 10th, 2019, because we had conversations about how we got here and how it's been pushed, I just want to remind everybody that June 10th, 2019, if you go and look at Fayetteville Observer, I was on record as saying, Waddell, a freshman council member, said afterward that she believed other council members were playing election year politics and hiding from voters that the city will need to raise taxes or fees next year to cover its expenses. I said, I think that for some, it may have been because we're in political season, and it feels like political suicide if you raise fees. But I think it's inevitable, and so it's going to happen, and I think it's just disingenuine that we not address that. And so I'm bringing that up to reiterate to everybody. I know that many of you were not on council then, but this is a conversation that we've been having, and the timing has never been good. We have been notified that there are ways for us to implement these projects, bond these projects, without having to task the voters with the tax increase. So it's not genuine for us to continue to say that the only way for us to get there to the street resurfacing and to the sidewalk installation is by taxing our citizens. And the only ask that I'm making, and the motion that I'm making, is that we continue to allow our staff during the course of this budget to look at different options that allow us to be able to bond street resurfacing and sidewalk installation infrastructure projects, and to move forward with looking at how we can bond public safety projects, and to present us with those options so that we can have them as a part of this budget as well. I'm not asking anybody to make a decision about doing a bond and putting it on a referendum, but we should receive that information. It does not commit us to moving forward with it for us to receive information. And so my motion is that we can continue to allow staff to do the research, to see how this may fit into our budget, should once we review it, then we can, once we review it, should we decide to move forward, then at that point, we can make that decision. So for clarity's sake, the motion on the floor is for us to allow staff to continue to research the different options that are available to us, to allow us to move forward, to give us an opportunity to consider moving forward with bonding public safety and infrastructure, as we have been previously discussing, and that is the motion.
So to clarify what you said, because I heard a couple of different contradicting things. So the GEO bond discussion that you've been mentioning, and we've been mentioning, as you said, for a long time, is a voter-approved tax rate increase, okay? And so your motion to research what now?
The motion that I'm making takes into account all of the information that we received. When we sat down in March in a work session, staff gave us three different options to be able to get us to public safety and infrastructure. We all agreed during that work session that we each felt that it was best for us to take it to the voters for a vote. I still agree with that. However, because it's more important to me that we get infrastructure and public safety handled, I am amenable to staff bringing us back different alternatives, different options, to be able to give us all of the options that we may have, so that we don't just take the conversation off the table. I think that if we continue to push the conversation, it is our citizens who suffer. And so my motion, again, is that we allow staff, we permit staff to continue to research and bring us back our options in terms of what is available to us for us to be able to move forward with the $75 million of public safety and sidewalk and street resurfacing infrastructure that we originally discussed. And they have multiple options that they can bring us back. We have a very professional budgeting staff, and they know all of the different things that they can bring to us. Again, they've given us three options already. We just chose one. So there's multiple ways for us to get to this end. There's more than one way to get to Raleigh from Fayetteville. There's more than one way to get to street resurfacing, sidewalk installation, and public safety projects, like the fire stations that we need, the 911 call center that we need. There's more than one way for us to get there. And I'm asking that we permit staff to bring us the information on how we can get there.
So, so there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell, and just to clarify this, that I've been on council probably six, seven years, and I've never heard them being able to tell us how to pay for 75 or 80 million dollars for stuff without a bond. So the discussion that I was privy to always had a bond as a caveat, but?
Include a tax increase, and every bond doesn't have to go to a voter on the referendum. So that's what I'm saying. We need all of our, I'm asking for us to get our options. And what we've seen in the past may not?
That they gave us, is what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I said what I said. And I'm asking for, if there's a second on this, look for a second.
Understand. So there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell for, I guess, from what I understand, for staff to bring us back additional options for infrastructure bonds. A second? And for public safety. Is there a sec? Councilmember here, is that your hand?
I think.
Mayor Colvin, Mayor Colvin, before?
Let me go to Councilmember here, and then you, Councilmember Ingram. Councilmember here, did you have a second or?
I have a question about the motion, because I want to make sure I'm understanding. I thought that the motion was going to be, or discussion was going to be about the bonds. So if I'm understanding correctly, now the way it was restructured, or the way that was stated, not so much that it was restructured, it sounds different than what I thought was initially stated, and even the pieces that I saw in the email. So, and we always ask staff to come back to us with ideas on how we can get to a point without doing this, or doing that, or raising taxes, or something. So if someone else would just kind of chime in?
I think Councilmember Ingram has, I don't know if she answered that direct question or not. Councilmember Ingram?
So, Mayor Colvin, and Council, I'll just say, I am choosing to second this motion, simply because the ask is extremely clear. It's not to say, yes, let's raise taxes. It is to say what the options are to perhaps avoid that. I'm not gonna say that I'm in full favor of raising taxes, because if I can go about another way besides raising taxes, then I want to know what that option is. But as we have dollars coming in, and we may not know what may be included in that that's coming in while we're going through our budget, then less, why not be open to that option? That, so I will second.
Okay, so there's a second by Councilmember. Counsel, let's just clarify this, because there's some political posturing going on now that we need to make sure is in force. So we go to a strategic plan, which laid out our priorities, which included this, okay? And the conversation has been that the options that have been brought to us are either to have a voter-approved GEO bond that they vote on, that adds additional money to your tax rate, or a revenue bond. But revenue bonds are only if it's something that you can just advance future revenues, which that has not been discussed. So the motion on the floor is mirroring, continuing to ask staff to prioritize our strategic plan goals, and that's what we spent two or three weekends for. So there's a motion and a proper second. There's Councilmember Dawkins, and then I think we need to take an up or down on that, and then we need to move on. There's Councilmember Dawkins and then Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I need the record corrected, because Council Lady Waddell misspoke. She said that we all agreed to tell staff to move forward with these reviews, and I want to make sure the council knows I was the lone vote against it. So that was factually incorrect, but I appreciate Council Lady Waddell acknowledging that was incorrect. We need to be clear to our staff right now, and right now is not the time to spend any staff time on any GEO, possible GEO bond. And I hope that the council will decide to vote against this motion. And if that's the case, then I would like to be recognized, because I also will have a motion to make at that time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's Councilmember Wright?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to say that, you know, in our strategic plan, we, you know, we have discussed GEO bonds thoroughly. And if we're asking for 75 million, you know, we did a bond for our ballpark for, you know, 40, 41, but it started off with 37 or something of that nature. And, you know, the citizens voted for that, and that was half of what we would be asking for a GEO bond for public safety and sidewalks. So I don't see how we can get around doing a bond, even in further discussion or research from the staff. And we have thoroughly went over this, and I remember that we've discussed this thoroughly. The staff came back, did a presentation, and gave us information on what we're talking about again now. I don't know why that, you know, we're talking about it, whether it's an election year or not. $75 million is $75 million that has to be paid back. And so, and again, I don't have a problem if the council, you know, say, hey, let's go back through this discussion again to see? um, you know, say, hey, let's go back through this discussion again to see if there's another way around it. Maybe maybe the staff can come up with something that they haven't come up with yet in the uh, seven years that I've been on council, we've been discussing this. And uh, and so, yes, you know, I'm concerned about public public safety and sidewalks, uh, as well as anybody, because I know out West, we need sidewalks uh, desperately. Uh, but I'm not prepared to, you know, go back through this again, knowing that, you know, the bulk of the council, we've discussed it back and forth. And again, we're here at the same place as far as making uh, another request for staff to go back and, you know, overload them, do something else that they've already done, so.
Yeah, in the midst of a pandemic. So Doug, uh, Council, Councilmember, I mean, uh, City Manager, if you can uh, just clarify, to your knowledge, has there been any other options that you reviewed that can raise seventy-five million dollars to invest without a bond, a geo?
Mayor.
Oh, hold on a second. I got I got a a question to.
I call for the question.
Yeah, all right. So council, um, there is a motion uh, on the floor to ask staff uh, to, well, you got to have a motion on your call for questions. So uh, at this time, do you, do you take it? Madam Attorney? Is, so if, does the call for question require that the discussion end? Isn't there a vote in and of itself for the discussion end?
The call for the question means that the discussion ends, yes, sir.
Okay, is that has to be voted on?
No, sir.
Okay, all right. So council, we will uh, look to you for your votes. Those in favor of voting for uh, staff to research uh, again uh, for research on our investment in infrastructure uh, bond or other options. Those in favor? Uh, motion, those. We've called for question. Those opposed?
You ca- call for the vote, please, because I think that there's.
Well, that's that's what I was doing. Okay, so I uh, so council, those in favor of the motion on the floor, that's been a motion by Councilmember uh, Waddell, a second by Councilmember Ingram, to ask staff uh, to to come back with additional information over and above what they've brought uh, for infrastructure options for the seventy-five million dollars. Those, those in favor? Okay, Madam Clerk, that is Councilmember Ingram, Waddell and Banks McLaughlin. All right, council, those, and Kinston, those opposed? All right, that motion fails. All right, uh, Councilmember Davis, did you have a, thank you. Councilmember Davis? Yes, ma'am, he he had his button. Councilmember Dawkins, is that you again?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to table any discussion of a geo bond until February twenty-twenty-one.
There's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins uh, to table the discussion of a geo bond tax. Is is there a second by Councilmember Wright?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion? Council, uh, Mayor Protim just.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Can hear you now.
Okay, so what I want to discuss is um, I would like to make an amendment to the motion that um, Councilmember Dawkins did and do a motion in um, in favor of additional investment for infrastructure and 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 kind of keep the conversation going. I don't want to shut it down because I think that we're going to.
That's what I just asked for. That's what I just asked for.
You you didn't say that, uh, ma'am, your motion was, your motion was to bring back additional information on a bond, other, okay. Well, we can go to the record for that. So so uh, Mayor Protim, you have the floor now, so what are you asking?
Well, I'm I'm asking to amend that emotion to have a motion in favor for additional investment in infrastructure, to have that conversation.
So that would be an amendment uh, asked to uh, those who made the motion, which is Councilmember Dawkins and Wright. So what is your pleasure on that?
Uh, no, um, I, uh, we can, we can definitely talk about this at our budget meetings. Uh, I want to put more money in our infrastructure as Council Lady Waddell does. I mean, I I support that and I just want to be able to find it inside our budget, inside whatever money we get from PWC, whatever the cat CARES Act money we get. I'm definitely wanting to to look into that. But what I'm asking the council to consider approving is delaying any discussion on a geo bond until February twenty-twenty-one. Now, we can talk investment infrastructure all day long. I'm not, and and I want to find the money to put it in there from our existing revenue sources, but not from a geo bond money. That's what I'm I'm requesting.
So the difference with this, uh, if I understand it, Councilmember Waddell's request was to have them to bring back information regarding finding this extra money. Yours is specific to say that the discussion referenced to the geo bond is removed or tabled and there'll be no further discussion on that until twenty-twenty-one. Is that right?
That that's exactly correct. And we can talk about infrastructure, um, but and but I want to know how much it's going to cost. I mean, I want to put another couple million in sidewalks. I want to put money in in more streets being being paved. I mean, you know, this is what we need to do, but to talk about, we're going to have to spend seventy-five million for a geo bond. No, I want us to table any discussion that would require a geo bond until February twenty-twenty-one.
So I think we headed in the same direction, we're just on two different side streets and we'll get there. Uh, but right now, uh, the motion on the floor is to specifically table the discussion about a geo bond tax, okay? And so, but I think I heard um, in your discussions, and so Mayor Protim was saying and and Mr. Dawkins was just saying that that is not pertaining to additional investment in infrastructure. This is just by way of a geo bond tax until twenty-twenty-one. Is that right? Because that is what, those two conversations get convoluted. So I think that is the motion that's on the floor, that's seconded by Councilmember Wright. Uh, didn't have any other, oh, okay. So Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, Mayor Colvin, thank you. And this this question may be for you, Mayor Colvin, and your city manager. And this will help me understand to, I'm asking to help me understand to where we are right now. So say in in our next work session, we receive our master plan, our our new parks and rent master plan, right, to be to be determined and be discussed. And giving, given the fact that some of us want a recreation center, are we, and and some of us want splash pads, are we just to say, no, we're not going to move on our master plan? And though that is a part of our strategic plan.
But hold on one second, Councilwoman Ingram. The motion on the floor, the discussion, yes, ma'am, the discussion needs to be a question about the motion on the floor. So motion, the motion on the floor is to table the discussion about a geo bond for infrastructure until twenty-twenty-one. So if your comments are pertaining to that, you have the floor. If they're talking about rec centers and those other things that you mentioned, then we have to, we have to vote on this motion first.
That was, that was just an analogy to help me understand priority wise.
Okay, well, please, please get to your question for me.
So basically, what I'm asking is, as we move forward as a council and we are looking at priorities, yes, we have a pandemic going on. But as, and my analogy was, we get a, in our next work session, we get our new parks and rent um, a master plan and we start action on that. Are we going to tie that new parks and rent master plan to our budget? Given, that that's what I'm asking, to understand what we are, what our priority should be, because that would be a part of our strategic plan if we move forward with anything on the, on that parks and rent master plan. However, continuing a discussion on just just finding information for options for funding, not to support a geo bond, but options. Uh, you see, you see where I'm trying to figure out where where do we stop the conversations at?
Well, where we, where we've got to, yes, ma'am, where we've got to stop it for this part is there's a motion on the floor to remove this, just the geo bond part of the discussion off the table until after, I guess, to twenty-twenty-one is what I think it is. It's seconded by Councilmember Wright. So any discussion needs to be specific to that. It's not a question asked, it's a discussion part on this motion that's on the floor. So did you have a, did you have a specific question about that motion?
And the geo bond, and my mute, okay, the geo bond is 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 a sure method to raise taxes and where the voters do have to go to the 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 um, uh, there there needs to be a referendum. That is a short for the geo bond.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's my question. Thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. All right, uh, Councilmember Wright? You're you're muted, sir.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to put some clarity on the motion um, in that this a geo bond of seven, seventy-five million, uh, I second uh, with uh, the motion of Councilmember Dawkins. But that does not limit the council uh, doing a budget or uh, discussions in work sessions as to come up with funding uh, as we do each year to put monies on sidewalks uh, or public safety as we go forward. It just won't be um, the fact that we are putting a referendum um, on the ballot for uh, for a seventy-five million dollar bond. And so, just like a- any of you, and I think we all on the same sheet of music when it comes to um, the image of our city, putting down sidewalks, uh, public safety, you know, with roads. We've been uh, you know, tackling that for a long time now. And I think we all want the same thing, but how we go about to get it um, based upon where we are in in uh, in our season, um, I think we going about it the right way. So that's why I second it, that would give us time to uh, relook this thing and give us time to deal with the pandemic that faces us all at this point. That's that's what I wanted to say.
All right, uh, Mr. Manager, you chimed in on something?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Council, um, as we talked about, in order to get this on for what would have been this fall, we would have needed to have started the process um, by April fourteenth. In order for us to consider a bond for the fall of twenty-twenty-one, you would likely have the same timeframe for that period next year, sometime in April. And so even if you were to have a conversation about a geo bond referendum in October or November or December, the earliest that you would be able to put it on for the voters to consider that would be at the general election. And so um, with that information, um, uh, you can decide one way or the other that you'd like to go. I can tell you, though, the the conversation about the geo, as you recall, many of you know, centers around the voter approval. That's why hence the time around the general election. The other funding sources that you have don't require that. And so um, uh, with that, Mayor, it it, it's always, if you limit the conversation that you have as a body, um, uh, it may not make that big of a difference here again because the, you're limited in the time that you can actually bring forward to vote.
Well, well, I think what the council's goal, I think, in some of this is to just not to continue to rehash this. I think they're saying to put this on hold till twenty-twenty-one because it continues to be an issue. But there is, um, it's been clear that they wanted to separate this from investment into it. I think everybody had agreed that they wanted to invest in it. This motion is specific to discontinue the geo bond discussion until, until twenty-twenty-one. So I see head nods by those that have made it. I'll go uh, briefly to Councilmember Waddell and uh, Davis, and then we'll we'll call for question.
I don't have a question. If my, if my hand was raised, I'm, I pressed accidentally. You guys carry on.
Okay, Councilmember Davis?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, and it sounds like we're echoing certain sentiments. Uh, but again, anyone looking to raise taxes right now is off, is 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 not, you know, um, doing what's, in my opinion, I'll say District Six. When you're raising taxes in District Six, on anyone in District Six is not a winning, a winning strategy. Honestly, not this year and not next year. So I think what this discussion has really highlighted um, is the responsibility we have to find um, passive ways to allocate, find funding to do the things that we want to do in a smaller, more incremental way or to make sure that we find those federal funds that may be coming down through infrastructure development at some point from the federal government. And I'm open to wait for that, rather than putting anything in the public eye, meaning newspaper, magazine, social media, talking about raising taxes on any citizen, any bond of any type, any shape and form and old fashion. So I'm not in shape and 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 I'm not in favor of any of that at all. I think this requires us to be creative. And listening, I think that uh, Councilwoman Waddell, I don't know what she was really saying. I'm, I'm not thinking she was, maybe maybe she wasn't saying, uh, it has to be a geo bond. Um, because in her presentation was more open to, hey, where we can find the money, maybe. Um, I do recall the geo bond being an initial discussion. Uh, but for everyone's e- implication, and maybe I misheard it. Tonight, I didn't hear geo bond specifically, and she may want to correct me if I'm wrong. But I'm in agreement.
You're actually not wrong, Councilmember Davis. And and in fact, when I asked the, when I stated the question originally, it was because I wanted to close out the conversation so we could move on to other options and other ideas and other concepts. My objective is to get more streets within our communities resurfaced and to get more sidewalks laid down. That's my objective. And so when Councilmember Jensen came behind me and and pretty much articulated pretty much exactly what I was saying, it it baffles me that I can't get the support of this council to do what we've been talking about for a number of years. But I don't want to step on anybody else's time. I appreciate you guys for, thank you for taking the public vote because that's really, that was my biggest objection. We had not had the conversation publicly. So I appreciate you and I'm gonna go unmute and and I'm done. Thank you, sir.
Well, I hope you'll support us not doing the geo bond, since you kind of already agreed to that. And I'm ready for the vote.
All right, uh, Councilmember Kinston?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, what I would like to say is for um, Councilmember Dawkins to say to actually table the conversation, I'm not in favor of of tabling the conversation or saying not discuss it. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, the motion on the floor is to uh, to table the discussion, uh, the option of a geo bond, uh, which is a tax at the end of the day. And uh, I, you know, this is my round to to have my two cents. Uh, do not think it's responsible physically uh, or to our citizens to ask them to be taxed for the foreseeable future because they're trying to, our unemployment rate is going to be a record number and we're going to do all we can to get money. Every level of government is doing all they can to put money back into the pockets of citizens, not take it out. So that being said, council, I'll look to you for votes on the motion. Uh, Councilmember, is Councilmember Banks, is that a blue light? Okay. Councilmember Banks?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your your blue hand.
No, it's okay, um. I know right now we're going through um, the COVID nineteen. It's a lot going on. It's affecting so many people in our, in our city and in our nation. However, just like we've spoken in the past, the city still has to continue to do business. As far as the taxpayer dollars, if that's the case, um, what's going on right now? We only spent what, I've heard fifty thousand dollars as a paying citizen out of a, well, we have a little over two hundred, uh, two hundred and nine thousand people in our city. That's chunk change to spend fifty thousand dollars on COVID nineteen. So to, for us to say that we don't want to talk about that right now because we're dealing with the COVID nineteen, I find that a little bit weird. It's kind of like, I just, I just definitely find that weird because with that money that we, from the taxpayer dollars, it's so much going on right now. We're hardly spending any money. When we do decide to spend money, it's on things that's not relevant to putting money back into city and benefiting um, those who are being affected by COVID nineteen. Prime example, homeless. Prime example, um, our employees. What have we done for our our staff?
So Ca- Councilmember uh, Banks? To be fair, I gotta keep this.
Off my chest.
Okay, all right. So and and to be, Councilmember Kinston, just to clarify kind of what she said. So, and, and to be, Councilmember Keston, just to clarify kind of what she said, the fifty thousand dollars expenses that have been tied directly to COVID, we have to track that to turn that in. I think what we heard tonight, when we started this meeting, is that we are expecting millions of dollars of shortages based on COVID, that we don't have a full number on that yet. So, I, I, I heard what you're saying, I think that was a, a key point, but I think that, that, I just wanted to clarify that for the listening audience, just to show, so that they, they understood that. Councilmember, um, uh, Ca- um, Keston?
You've already clarified, but just before the vote, I'd want to make sure that Councilmember Dawkins just restates it so I can make sure that I am clear in what is mo- the motion, if, if you could do that for me, please.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the motion is, uh, motion to table any discussion of a GO bond until February twenty twenty-one.
Right, and that, and that's a second, I have a second about Councilmember Wright. Uh, we've had thorough discussion on the motion, so all those in favor of tabling the GO bond discussion until twenty-one, let me see, show of hands. So, Madam Clerk, that is, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, Councilmembers, uh, Hare, Wright, uh, Davis, Mayor Pro Tim and Dawkins. Uh, those in, uh, opposition of the motion, hands? All right. Uh, those in opposition, hands please, as Councilmembers Ingram, um, Keston, Waddell and Councilmember Banks, where you, what's your place? Okay, and Councilmember Banks. So, uh, motion carries, uh, the table. And so council, uh, the city manager has, uh, a brief, uh, something that he wanted to share with us, uh, reference to a SAFE grant. Mr. Manager, you want to explain that?
It starts on page seventy-five and goes to page two twenty-five? Okay, I'll be much briefer than that.
You can't even make jokes, but.
Um, so there are two quick points here. Um, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, um, mentioned, um, employees. And what I want to close on, Mayor, if I can, is on employees, particularly on the public safety employees as well. Um, as you, many of you know as well that the, uh, Sheriff's Department recently raised its minimum pay for deputies and for jailers. Um, both of those increases put a jailer and a deputy salaries, uh, almost five thousand dollars more for the deputy over what we currently pay our first line, um, police department employees. Um, we are coming up with strategies, both short and long term, to address that. And you will, um, likely see those as part of the budget re- recommended budget. I have more information on that as time goes on. But, um, understanding that one of the council's goals as well was employee pay as articulated at trying to get us to a livable wage, we will be within our ability also trying to make some of those adjustments too. Just wanted to point that out, um, tonight, um, as, that is also something that we have not forgotten about. But in particular, right now, I'd like, um, Tracy, if you are still with us, if you could put up the, um, item on the SAFER grant and walk us through that very quickly. And SAFER grant stands for Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. It is a federal grant that comes around, um, from time to time. And we are, um, uh, contemplating whether or not we would, um, apply for that grant that would give us eighteen firefighters, but it comes at a cost of, um, at the end of the grant cycle, you have to pick up the full freight of the officers. Stacy, I mean, uh, Tracy?
Are, are you guys able to see the, uh, screen I just shared with the, uh, memorandum from Chief Hill to City Manager Hewitt?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is, um, a request from the fire department. They have this SAFER grant opportunity for which the application period, I believe closes, um, early May, it might be May fifteenth, but there's a lot of work involved in putting together an application. So, if I'm not mistaken, this document was shared with the council, but it shows the fire department's, uh, justification for why they would like council to consider authorizing the application for a SAFER grant to fund the addition of eighteen firefighter positions. So, I'm scrolling my screen because the parameters of the SAFER grant provide seventy-five percent of the personnel costs funded by the grant for two years. And then in the third year, that funding drops to thirty-five percent. And then after that point, the city would have to pay the full cost of the eighteen firefighters. So I'm going to scroll further. Here's a little table that shows for those eighteen firefighters and the, um, it's not a lot of operating costs, but a little operating cost that goes along with them. It's a little over a million in the first year, and then you would project it to increase back up to a million in the fourth year. So you see there that by the end of the, the grant period, in addition to paying the partial funding over the first three years, at the end of the grant period, the cost to keep those firefighters is a little over one million dollars, which equates to about three quarters of a cent on the tax rate. So, the structural deficit that we consider is how would we fund those additional costs absent an additional revenue source in the out years? So that is the question, um, for the council as to whether they would support submission of this application with the understanding that it would likely require that we would come to you to authorize a tax rate increase to fund these positions when the grant, uh, runs out.
So, uh, thank you, Ms., Ms. Broyles, I did, it did generate a couple of questions. So just to summarize that before I go to Councilmember Banks, this is a grant that we would get that would pay the fee, uh, the, uh, the salaries in those percentages basically ending in year number four. So you're saying in year four, we would have to have some identifiable, uh, revenue source to pay, to keep those employees. My question for the manager is, this pays for eighteen, are we eighteen firefighters short? Mr. Manager?
We, yes, sir. If we go back up, um, and you look at the justification that the, um, fire chief has provided, uh, his analysis indicates that the department needs to add minimum of eighteen positions to bring the department back to minimum compliance. Um, as with everything, if funding is not provided, um, then the staff will do the best, um, that they can. As you, um, even though we're not talking about the GO bond, um, part of the G, um, structure for the public safety and building additional fire stations were that when the new station comes online on Elliott Bridge Road, um, when the Broadwell, um, development takes off, we would need to build and to staff a fire station there as well as to provide some additional staffing potentially and other areas as well. And so this could give you, um, a jumpstart on that. But I want to put a much, much broader and heavier point on it than Tracy did. Um, the council tonight would need to know, and we can let you, um, think about this and we can come back with it as a question for your, um, meeting next week or even as late as the work session for May. But you need to go into this with the, um, belief that in year four, we are going to need to find additional resources up and beyond what we currently have. And this is obligating us or that council at that point in time to, uh, what equates to three-fourths of a penny on a tax rate. Um, it is, um, we've had these grants before. We've had grants like this of, um, of same, similar nature from, in the police department. We have a lot of, um, success with them, but again, they don't come without, um, strings. And the strings are that you have eighteen firemen, uh, firefighters that you would have to provide, um, salary support for um, in a declining seventy-five, seventy-five, thirty-five, one hundred percent range.
Okay, all right, uh, did have a couple of questions, Councilmember Banks, Dawkins, Hare, Ingram? Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, can you hear us?
Um, I can, I just saw a screen, I didn't see, um, see anybody else. Um, yes, that was one of the questions that I was going to ask as far as was, uh, were there a need for eighteen, um, firefighters? Also, is that just a salary that doesn't cover, will we need more, um, fire trucks and, um, equipment? Or is this just strictly salary, correct?
Um, it does not cover the fire apparatus, but it does include, um, I think, um, fifteen thousand dollars or something like that early on, if I remember the budget, Tracy, for, um, some of their personal gear, um, and things like that.
That's correct, sir. It includes basically the operating costs associated only with the people, the PPE, the, the ongoing uniform expenses, et cetera.
Okay, Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, I'm, I'm muted, all right. Um, our, uh, Doug, are you needing a motion? Because I'm, I'm willing to make a motion, uh, to support, uh, this, this program. Um, we can do that, um, sir, if the council is so inclined, um, tonight or, uh, next week. The sooner the better because as Tracy mentioned, it will require some time for us to put it together. Thank you. All right, very good. All right, council, so when you look at the numbers, it's fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars of firemen. So that's going to cover a lot of that PPE that Tracy talked about and, and the other equipment involved. And of course, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin is correct, it's not going to, it's not going to cover trucks or our fire stations. We got to build a fire station, uh, out Cedar Creek Fields Road area, we know that. We got to build a new fire station out in the Utah area, we know that. Elliott Bridge Road's got to have a fire station. And eventually, within the next three or four years on the north side, we're going to need a fire station out near that Broadwell property, uh, that's being developed. So, I'm, I'm in support of this and, um, and I, Mayor, if you want a motion, I'll, I'll make it or unless you just want to wait.
Uh, do have a couple more inquiries, and so I'll circle back to you, um, Dawkins. Uh, Councilmember Hare, Councilmember Hare?
I agree, there's a lot. Um, I didn't know that we were that short with eighteen. I, I'm not ready right now because we just got finished having this, this large discussion. And I'm trying to, I'm going to need that support, that type of, uh, data from state to tell us how do we get there. Okay, let me back up. If this, uh, proposal is written up and we, um, are awarded this grant, wh- when do we think we will be awarded, if we are awarded?
I'm not mistaken, the last time we had a SAFER grant, the award period began, I think it runs on the federal fiscal year, so it would probably be October of, uh, this, this calendar year.
And just for, just for those that are hearing, then when does that expire where we would have to take up that entire load?
Four years, year four.
Okay. I don't know if I'm ready, um, to move forward tonight, but that's just my, I, I just don't know because I'm still trying to figure out we're looking to recoup where we are now, which is going to take us into next year into, um, twenty-two, um, twenty twenty-one. I'm trying to see how we get there in four years. And also, we're going to be recouping or regrouping and, and restructuring funds and rebuilding fro- funds from the pandemic year that's going to go over into the following year. I don't know, I think, I think we, I would like to have a little bit more discussion about this.
Well, well, he, he's not necessarily saying he needs, uh, a decision tonight, so keep that in mind.
I thought I heard somebody say it was a motion.
Oh, he said it could, it could be tonight or it could be in the, the subsequent meetings that are coming up next week.
Yeah, I'm not ready, I, I'm not ready to my.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got you. All right, so Councilmember Ingram?
Um, Mayor Colvin, my, my sentiments are a bit the same to Councilmember Hares as to not necessarily be ready for this because, um, given the conversation that we just walked out of with not wanting to support findings, uh, alternative findings that would not support a tax increase, I, I, and this says there will be a tax increase. I, I, my first question would be, is there an alternative to this city management? Then my second question would be, because we, and that's, Councilmember Dawkins mentioned it, we ha- we still have public safety needs that we have to, we have to get underway. But because we just pretty much voted all of that down this evening, I, 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 I agree that we, we do need to make sure we fill our gap in eighteen firefighters that we are short, that's a lot. But I'm trying to understand how if we're not supporting our public safety needs and i- and we didn't want to support the public safety needs to find alternative options that would not raise the tax increase, I, I don't, I, I will also like, much like Councilmember Hare, I need much more discussion about this.
Thank you, ma'am. And just to clarify, um, that was not the discussion that was voted on. The discussion voted on was that there would be no discussion of the bond slash tax until next fiscal year. It was not saying not to find alternative needs. So let the minutes reflect that, uh, just for accuracy. Um, Councilmember Banks? Councilmember Banks?
I'm fine, I'm fine, thank you.
Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you. I, I will, um, say that prior to your comment, I thought that, um, Councilmember Ingram had pretty much covered everything that I, that I was going to say. But I will say, we did just make that vote because I specifically asked for us to look for other options for funding our public safety and our infrastructure needs and, and the vote was cast against it. And so it seems a little bit of a discrepancy to now turn around and say, less indebted council four years down the road to having to take on a tax increase when we're not ourselves willing to consider the possibility of even making sure that we have enough adequate fire stations, that we have enough, you know, w- w- I'm, she said everything that I wanted to say for the most part. And I thought I didn't have a comment until you indicated that that's not what, what we voted. But that is exactly the vote that we took. We took two votes and that was exactly the first vote that we took.
Uh, oh, I respectfully disagree, but, uh, I understand. And so I think, again, I'll reiterate the fact that the manager presents this SAFER grant decision not as a decision point tonight. I understand, there are a number of questions. I have questions as to how we do this. Uh, first time I've heard about the fact we're short eighteen firefighters. And so there are a number of questions that need to, uh, to take place. But I think that there are a number of other methods to figure out what our needs are. Um, the discussion is about, uh, how we prioritize what we address at this time with everything going on. So I'll go to, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, Councilman Davis, and then, um, I'll go back to you, Mr. Manager, that you, can you have, uh, council, we'll, we'll probably ask council to submit questions, uh, to, uh, Mayor Pro Tim between now and maybe our next meeting. And, Mr. Manager, you and your team probably need to be prepared to explain this. I know that we always try to capitalize on grant funding and, and all of that, but there's a number of questions that the council presented tonight, I think are very valid. So, um, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. What I propose is we will bring this back to council either at, um, your regular meeting or at the work session. Um, and, um, we can cover it then. I think that, um, uh, the focus of the council has always been, ever since I've worked here in the community, about public safety. But it also, as everyone has said, that comes with other competing needs as well. And I know that, as I've mentioned, the fire chief and police chief all understand that. And, um, that's why we presented it tonight because, um, in the grand scheme of things, this is still, um, uh, in year four, an obligation that the city would have to make. But we'll be happy to bring that back, um, just consider tonight an introduction and we'll bring it back at an upcoming meeting well before the deadline.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim, did you have something?
Um, no, sir, Mr. Mayor, my questions have been answered as long as we are going to bring it back and keep it open for discussion. Thank you.
Councilman Davis?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, um. My question was pretty much answered, but taking a snapshot look at this. Um, moving forward, I, I think this is going to, how we have to figure out how to do business and, um, how we communicate with each other is extremely important when we make a, a direction. When we make a directional change in the general premise of our points, we need to be very clear as to, well, I'm not saying that anymore. I'm not for that anymore. I'm now for this. You know, we need to work, work on that so that we can all support each other better. But if you look at this, as we read through this, there are not many grants that pay seventy-five percent of salary for your most critical employees. I haven't seen any. And whoever brought this to us, to the city, I thank them as a staff member for bringing these kind of solutions. And I'm excited also to see what comes from the federal government in terms of infrastructure monies that we can all front load into our needs, where we can put as least amount of weight on the citizens as possible. These are the kind of ideas, in my personal opinion, that will carry us through hard times when the federal government or any agency is willing to write seventy-five percent of the, uh, fiscal, uh, weight off and have us pay twenty, twenty-five cent on a dollar for, uh, our most critical, uh, need. Again, this doesn't raise taxes, um, on our citizens immediately or otherwise. I like this.
All right. So council, uh, I think the manager's clear. I think we have, uh, made our rounds and, uh, with that, I'll look to you for a motion to adjourn.
Can we receive this in email to prepare our questions, please?
Uh, I didn't hear you. No?
Can we receive this in email to prepare our questions, please?
Oh, yes, yes. Uh, Mr. Manager, please send that out to, uh, all of us, please.
Mayor Colvin, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right. Thanks, Councilmember. See y'all later.